Good evening, anyone. Welcome to this new venue with these very loud microphones. I feel like these are very loud. Good evening and welcome. Noting the presence of a quorum, I now call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. I want to note that Acton TV is taping our meeting tonight in this new venue, and I want to thank them for doing so. And the Acton elections are coming up on Tuesday, March 26th. It is a contested race, so encourage people to vote, please. Elected members will be sworn in at the end of the Acton Town Meeting. And Boxborough, the deadline to submit papers for Boxborough is April 2nd. The elections, just to remind you, in Boxborough are on May 21st. I would also like to note there's a slight change in the agenda, the order of the agenda this evening. Representative Jennifer Benson is with us tonight and will speak to us right after the superintendent's update. Okay, we're going to move to item three, which is public participation. If there's anyone here who wants to speak to us about an item not on the agenda this evening, you're welcome to step forward now. Okay, seeing no one. I'm going to invite our student rep to give us the update. Betty Markman is here.
Should I turn that? Okay, all right. Hello, everybody. So it's been a relatively uneventful past few weeks over at AB. The National Honor Society just had their elections today. A lot of talented students are going up to try for that leadership position of president or vice president. And also, in a few weeks, I believe we are having elections for new class and school committee representatives, so we might see some new faces around here in a month or so. And in other news, the sophomores are taking the first computerized MCAS at the high school next week. There's not much else going on, but thank you for listening.
Thank you, Betty. Item five on the agenda is our meeting minute approval, and we have a warrant. Can find it. There are three warrants, actually, on the agenda now being, they're being circulated, so please sign them and pass them on. Vendor warrant 19-019 and 019 PR in the total amount of $2,128,862.76, and payroll warrant P1919 in the total amount of $2,496,97.32. In your packet, you will find the meeting minutes from February 13th and March 7th. Angie, did you have, did you have changes to one of those, to the February 13th minutes?
Correct.
Okay.
So there was a comment that I reviewed the tape. There was a comment about the challenge success data that's hard to find right now, so I wanted to record that. And I also want to put the--
Where was that?
Page three.
Okay. Where, can you locate that?
Okay, so it's question from the committee, the first paragraph. We talk about the data, the challenge success data. So there was one comment that we're, right now, is the data is hard to find right now on the website, so I want to add that. The other one that I also ask a question about when we do the survey is based on per building. I would like to put the request in there as well. I review, I just reviewed the tape, but that's the question I asked. Thank you.
Okay. Beth, did you get that?
I did.
Okay. Are there any other changes? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll move for proof.
Okay. To move to proof as amended?
As amended.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Do I hear a motion on the March 7th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, motion passes. Item six is the superintendent's update.
Well, good evening, everyone. Betty, I don't know how I'm going to outdo 10th grade computer-based MCAS in terms of excitement, but I will give it a go. I want to actually just send out some congratulations to a few different student groups first. First, the Blanchard Memorial School Grade Five Destination Imagination Team recently won a bid to the state finals. The team moved on after placing first at regionals and being awarded the Renaissance Award. So congratulations and good luck to that entire team when they head to the state finals. That's wonderful. Also, congratulations to Presidium Circus members. They also moved on to the state finals for their performance of The Book of Everything, and they will be going on Friday, March 29th. So I was able to reserve my tickets today, so I would encourage you to all get out often. Vote early and vote often, right? And then finally, congratulations to the high school academic decathlon team. They actually won the state championship back on March 16th, so lots happening. Betty, there's a lot happening at that high school. Welcome to my update. I had an opportunity this past Tuesday to attend event with, an event with the Commissioner of Education out at UMass Amherst. So as many of you know, we have a new Commissioner of Education, and he did similar to what I did with an entry process. He did something similar around the state, doing a lot of listening, talking to people around the state, and he put on an event kind of as a way to demonstrate his entry findings. And they, was by really invite only, had to actually apply to attend, so there were about 50 of us as superintendents, along with students from across the state. There were some parents from across the state, educational leaders, school committee members here and there. It was really a nice event. And, you know, I think what I took away from it is a lot of hope in, the commissioner stressed really students first, and stressed this notion of student learning and how can we really deeply engage students in 21st century learning, and what does that look like? That was, there's a lot of hope around that, I think, especially from superintendents, as I've talked to my colleagues, just in a shift from pure accountability from the Department of Education to balancing their regulatory need to be account, the Accountability Agency, with also a focus on student learning and support for districts. I think a secondary hope is he talked a lot about giving more autonomy back to schools and districts, and less regulation. So I think those changes will be gradual over a period of time, but I have a lot of hope around that. There were a couple of moments that struck me, and so in the update you received, and we'll get this out digitally as well, but there's a link to the recorded livestream of the event, and I gave, there's, there's a number of different videos that you can watch, but I gave you the opening ceremony, which was really neat. It actually started out with a percussion ensemble from Lawrence Public Schools, but then there were two things I wanted to be able to share with you, so I put the minutes in there that you can forward to. One, there was a student play put on by the Lawrence High School Drama Club, and it was an arts academy within Lawrence High School that had done this. And it was all really focused on the experience of one student who had significant test anxiety, and what it was like for that student to be taking a test. And it was really fascinating, and I was, as I was watching it, all I could think of was, we should be watching this, too. Even though it was a production and fictional, it was so hitting home for what I think a lot of students experience, so please take advantage of that if you have an opportunity. And then the second one I wanted to share with you was the keynote address. That was given by a person, Charles Fidel, who's internationally known as a speaker, and he founded the Center for Curriculum Redesign. He really focused on this notion of how artificial intelligence is going to impact the world of education, particularly with artificial intelligence taking over a lot of automation in society, and talking about what are the skills that we need to be teaching to our students who are with us now in order to be able to prepare them for a world where things are becoming increasingly automated, jobs are becoming automated. So what are the skills that are going to be valuable as our students progress into the world throughout their lives? It was a really fascinating talk. He's a wonderful speaker, and I would encourage you to also be able to do that. So I provided the times, there were no separate links because it was all one big opening ceremony, but I thought that would be helpful to see. I also think, you know, if you have an opportunity before the workshop that we do on Monday, where we talk about the entry findings in more in depth, that would be a great resource to see, because I think where I would hope we can go in terms of a vision for education is very well aligned to a lot of what Charles Fidel was saying during that entry. So if you have an opportunity, it's probably about 25 minutes long, 30 minutes long, but it's a really neat and engaging talk. That is it for tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Peter. We're going to move on to like the new item seven. I'm so pleased tonight to welcome our state representative, Jen Benson, here to speak about the foundation budget. We also invited Senator Eldridge and Representative Tammy Govea. They were not able to come. Tammy Govea did send us a letter. Representative Benson represents the 37th Middlesex District, which is Boxborough and then half of the precincts of Acton, the ones touching Boxborough and Maynard and part of Concord. Everyone who votes at like the junior high, basically. She served on the Lunenburg School Committee, and I believe pushed through all day kindergarten when she did so. She was elected in 2008 to this, to the state legislature, and she sat on a special commission to study universal pre-K and worked on ed reform as well. So we welcome her to the podium this evening.
And I don't know if you want me to just start talking, or how you want to do this, but I guess I'll give a little bit of an update. So I was first elected to the state legislature in 2008, and I was elected to the school committee in 2003. And before that, I was a room parent and pretty much everything you can imagine, and served on the local school improvement councils and just completely invested. So I'm a big advocate of public education and supporting our local schools, and that's why I ran for state rep. When I was on the school committee, you know, we were working through lots of issues, and one of the things was possibly regionalizing. And I was chair of the school committee for a couple of years while we were in conversations with regions, schools around us about regionalizing. And it really, to me, highlighted some of the gaps that existed between the state and the local, right? And so one of the reasons I really wanted to run, and actually, I will honestly say at first I didn't want to run. My 13-year-old daughter convinced me to run. And what I decided I would do is, assuming I would lose this, that seat, I would talk all about how it's so important for us to be partners at the local level and at the state level. And I truly believe that, and I have tried to make that a hallmark of the work I've done in the legislature, to make sure that those needs are heard and that we're good partners with you while you do the real boots-on-the-ground work on the local level. So I'm really here to be, happy to be here, not only to talk about what's happening at the state, but also to get feedback from you as to how, you know, my office can be more useful. I served two terms, my first two terms on the Education Committee. I was the only freshman member of the Education Committee when I first entered the legislature. Now I am chairing the Joint Committee on Healthcare Financing. We are actively gathering information and working on a healthcare reform bill for the Commonwealth this term, and so that is a heavy lift. My hope and plan is to still incorporate sort of my passion, which is children, and, you know, both child development and support and fetal and maternal health, which I think is critically important. And if we can get kids off to a healthy start, that's one great way of reducing healthcare costs moving forward, is keeping people healthy. So I'm hoping that that will be a focus and sort of overarching piece of our legislation. Do you want me to launch into funding? Okay. So, you know, I was giving a break and letting people, you know, think of questions, if you have questions unrelated to education funding. So, so when I first ran for school committee, I decided that I wanted to really understand how schools are funded, and I did a very deep dive into the foundation budget, how that was created, what happened in 1993 and why. And so, and how sort of our town and changing demographics would impact sort of not only our required local contribution, but also what we would expect from the Commonwealth. And then that really informed, you know, when we implemented full-day K in 2006, it sort of helped us, guided us through that as well, and I was chair of the school committee when we did that. And that was one of the goals that I had entering the school committee, was I'm a big believer in early childhood ed. So that also propelled me into, you know, chairing the after-school and out-of-school time courting council, which I think you mentioned, for five years, looking at making sure we have lots of options for students all over the Commonwealth for after-school, before-school, and summertime learning. So, so in doing this deep dive, it became, you know, we knew even in the mid-2000s that there were gaps in this, in this system, right? So there's an imperfection in how we both calculate sort of what a required local contribution is, and what we expect, and how we value the wealth and ability to pay of a local community. But that's not what we're talking about tonight. That was not touched in this Foundation Budget Review Commission, because I think most people realize that any, the measure that we have is pretty good, and we don't have a better one at this time. Granted, you know, we have a lot of diversity in towns, and every town in my district is not only very different, you know, between each other, but also within themselves. We're never going to capture and protect every member of every town because we use aggregate numbers. And so, you know, looking at other ways of supporting community members who may be struggling with property tax relief and all of that is something that we endeavor to do. But I think right now, for what we need to calculate, I think we have, I think most people agree that we have a pretty okay way of calculating local ability to pay and local wealth. So the Foundation Budget Review Commission didn't look at, really, at that. They looked at the other piece of the formula, which is what does it cost to run a school district today? So, you know, it makes sense that there would be a difference between 1992 and '03, when this passed, and today, right? We've seen many trends, and one thing I'm looking a lot at is healthcare costs. That's one example that I think we can all understand. But there are trends that are happening across the Commonwealth that have changed pretty dramatically in the last 20 years or so. And so how does that change? So we knew even in the early, mid-2000s that there were gaps, but we, you know, we had anecdotal evidence of that. We could look at sort of what we're actually paying and what things were costing versus what the, the foundation formula was saying. But it wasn't until we really got everybody at the table to look at that. And it was a really great, I think, example of, you know, state government and many people around state government coming together and trying to solve a problem. I mean, they worked through, I think, a very complicated formula and took into account a lot of the current trends that we're seeing around the state and different communities, and really tried to account for that. And so this new formula is something that we've actually already started funding. I, you know, I saw Representative Govea's letter briefly, thank you for sharing, prior to the meeting, and I do, I will argue with one piece of that. I mean, it is, it is stated, I think, that the legislature has not prioritized public education funding, and that is not true. When I came in and was sworn in in January of 2009, we saw a huge economic decline, not only here in Massachusetts, but around the country, and really around the world. And the, we cut hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of line items out of the state budget, including heartbreaking programs that, for me, it was, I stayed up, I mean, even now, it brings tears to my eyes to think of the things that we had to cut in that budget. But one thing we didn't do was hurt public education funding. And that was a priority for every single member of the legislature at that time and every year since that I've been in the legislature. And just because we haven't added lots of hu, new dollars into it, we have increased funding there, where we have not done so in most other areas of the budget. And when healthcare funding on some level is taking up 54% of our state budget, what is left that we can choose to spend is going toward Chapter 70 and other supports for public education. And I think it's really important for the public to understand that. This isn't a choice not to fund. It was looking at the formula that we had, funding that while also understanding that children getting food is important, children having a coat in the winter is important. These are all tangential supports of education as well. And so Chapter 70 is the biggest single line item in the budget that we fund, that we have a choice to fund, and it has gone up pretty much every year since I've been in the legislature. And so this is, I think, a really important, the dedication of the legislature to Chapter 70 aid is incredible. And I don't hear it and don't see it for any other part of our budget, which is a lot, like I do for Chapter 70. Republican, Democrat, doesn't matter, we all support it. So I, I think it's really, that is, I wanted to make that statement because I know my colleagues in the legislature would be heartsick to think that they were, you know, that was not represented well. So in 2015, the FPRC made recommendations, and we started that following year in that budget incrementally increasing spending from the state in two areas, health insurance and the special education increments. And we've started making increases to start catching that up over time, understanding that a billion-dollar price tag, which is what we were tasked with, with the FPRC recommendations, we were not going to be able to find in the budget. That was going to require new revenue. And especially at a time when we're still rolling back our income tax rate as requested by the voters many years ago, we're down to now 5.05% for our income tax, and it's going to roll down again next year. So even though the economy is improving, we are losing money because we are rolling back the income tax. And so I think that's another piece that's really important to remember. So for us to raise an additional billion dollars would, the only real place we can get that from that is in our control is the income tax. And that would require raising the income tax. And I think that there has been a real reticence by the legislature to do that because of the vote of the people asking to roll that back. And so this, that's sort of the tension that exists in the legislature between a one-year full funding of the FPRC recommendations, you know, in light of existing revenues. There had been an effort to pass the biologic question around sort of the millionaires' tax, and that, because of the way it was worded, was thrown out by the courts. And so that's no longer an option. So a billion dollars is, is, is a very significant amount of money that really takes, oh gosh, I can't remember exactly now, but, you know, a full point increment, increase on the income tax. I mean, we would have to be going up quite a bit to fund that. So, you know, that's the, that's the real conversation. It's not whether the legislature values education, because the value is there, I mean, we do. It's, it is either what are you willing to live without to, to find a billion dollars to put into public education, or are you willing to spend more? So the other piece to this, and we can get into specifics, you know, about the recommendations from the commission as well, and I'm happy to do that, but these are the, I'm giving you a sense of the conversations we have. The other piece to this, of course, is when you change the foundation budget formula, you change the required local contribution amounts, too, because it's a shared experience, right? We're, we're kind of in this together. And so for some cities and towns, that's going to require additional revenue raised at a local level, too. Now, Acton-Boxborough funds above your required local contribution already, so the impacts to you probably wouldn't, would be negligible. But for some communities, that's the additional conversation that's ha, that's being had, is once you change that formula, it's not only about money from the state, it's also about money from the local side as well. So, so do I think we should do it? Absolutely. I think we've needed to do it for a long time. But I think, and so I think there's, nobody will argue with that. We all agree that we know healthcare costs have risen. I mean, that's easy to see, that's, that's a no-brainer. We know the number of special education students, both in district and those that require an out-of-district placement, have increased, and those costs have increased. So we know that. We also know that more and more school districts are working at bringing their special education students home for more inclusive programs in the district, and that's terrific, but that requires support. And we know many communities struggle with ELL and students in poverty, and those numbers are, are not representative of the current population either. And so these are all real. We totally agree with that. I don't think anybody, either in the legislature or in your position, argue with the need. And so I'm here to say absolutely, and we are on track to fully fund this by 2024, at the rate we're going, by incrementally increasing. The question is, and I think the biggest question raised by some of the legislation that's filed, is can we do it right away? And that's, that would require new revenue. And so that's the other, and that's why I'm happy that you invited me to come and talk, because I think that's, we have to have an adult conversation about that. And, you know, I mean, I'm sure I'm going to get hate mail after this for even mentioning it. But the fact is, that's a reality. And, you know, it's been a very long time, and very few towns, cities and towns have passed their own property tax increases, except for like a debt exclusion, but not like an operational increase. And, and clearly, the Commonwealth, the last time a large-scale tax was increased was the sales tax back in '09. And so, you know, is this something we need to be talking about? And I think if we say that we value this work that you're doing and value the work that has been done around what it takes to, to pay for education, then we need to have a serious conversation about that. So I'm going to let you all say what you need to say, ask questions.
Representative Benson, I appreciate your, your coming to talk with us. I, I remember sitting at some of the meetings at the joint commission, and they were, they were well-attended, and the concerns were real, and they, it almost didn't depend on which community you're from. We were hearing very similar concerns. As I read through the report, I noticed there were a couple of points where the commission said that there was something of interest that they wanted to study, but they ran out of time. Is there a plan to kind of pick up those threads?
I'm really glad you brought that up. So, so I, I'm sure you recall, last session, there was a real effort to address the FPRC recommendations, and there was an ed reform bill passed in the Senate and the House. And then when those went to conference committee, it fell apart and, and never made it over the finish line. And this was exactly the hang-up, that piece of the report, because the House said that work needs to be done, and let's get a small timeframe, a six-month timeframe, and, and direct DESC to have to do it, because quite frankly, they haven't done it. Okay? So this would be in, in law, they had to respond and create programs in order to fund, because the part of the problem was, there was a, it wasn't a simple to really close this achievement gap, right? And to go into districts with a high number of free and reduced lunch populations, say, for example, we don't have-- say, for example, we don't have programs yet to be able to put a dollar figure on. And part of the question was, we, you know, in the report, we can't get that detailed. We need experts to really be looking at what are the right interventions, and what is it going to cost? And let's then put a dollar figure on that and fund it. And that's what the House legislation said. Basically, the House legislation took the report and put it in legislation and tied funding to it, and said in six months, we want the additional funding amount that we need for this piece. And the Senate chose to say, let's just fund, put money in it, and we'll let, you know, somebody else worry about the planning later. And that was the hang-up between the two bills was why it didn't get passed. And you know what? I think there are value, there's value on both sides of this argument. You know, it could be the Senate was saying, well, it's not a one-size-fits-all, and let's let local school districts decide how they're going to use this money to intervene. But the problem is, that's one of the things we've been doing, and it hasn't worked. I mean, we've been talking about the nagging achievement gap between wealthier districts and poorer districts for a long time. And the interventions that have happened have not been successful, because this achievement gap still exists, since we've been talking about it, since Governor Patrick, you know, addressed this. We have made really tough decisions at the legislature to, you know, categorize failing districts and, and create oversight over failing districts to try to get into what is causing this, and that has been unsuccessful. So, we really need more targeted interventions. And I think the House was a little nervous about tying money to something we couldn't measure. And so, I think that was, that was sort of the crux of the problem. And right now, the DESE is not doing this work, at least not that I have seen, and not that has been reported to me. Now, I don't sit on the Education Committee, so I'm not as frontline to this. But part of the reason we wanted that very tight turnaround language in that bill is because we have not seen the work done yet, and we wanted to hold them accountable.
Hi. So, what is your understanding of why DESE is not doing that work? I, I mean, obviously, you didn't pass the law, but it seems like the administration would see the value in, in asking that they do that.
I don't know. I honestly don't know. And, you know, it could be that they're not seeing, I mean, first of all, just to back up, it's a hard problem, right? There's been lots of attempts to address this unsuccessfully. So, I think that's, we have to acknowledge that. I think the DESE has been, for many years, trying to address this unsuccessfully. But I also think that they, if not pushed to do it, I think they're reticent to go out there and say, this is what it's going to cost, and this is what we need to do, without knowing the backup of, yes, there's going to be funding there. Because then it puts those school districts in a really awkward and tenuous position of kind of knowing what they need to do, but not having any supports in order to do it. So, it's almost a chicken-and-egg problem on some level, I think. I mean, I don't know, but that's, that would be my instinct. You know, because this is, like I said, I mean, we've all been talking, this is something we know. And it's pretty amazing to me that with the, the sort of the wealth of knowledge that we have in Massachusetts, that we haven't been able to really dig into that and figure out what is, what is the mechanism to change this. And it's not just money. And I think that's really important. You know, money can solve a lot of problems, it's not going to solve every problem. And so, that's why we also need to understand sort of the programming and the levers and the accountability, and I don't mean accountability in a punitive way, I just mean, we want to fund the things that work, and we want to improve and increase the things that work.
I admire, I admire that you're asking those big questions. Certainly, that, you know, a, a budget is a, is a value statement, and, you know, even, even our district, we're, we're seeing such an explosion in the, in the diversity of our demographics. And it's really minimal in comparison to, to many districts out there. But we're, it's landing hard on us because we're, we're, we've never really had to, to respond before. So, I, you know, we're, I, I'm not sure how we're going to be affected. But it's a lot, we ask a lot of, of our community, and we, we, we provide, I think, excellence for them in return. But it's a lot to bear. It's a lot to pay for.
Okay.
Related to the funding, does the taxes from online purchasing, and I hate to even tie it to this, but gambling and marijuana, offer opportunities for more funding for education?
So, online purchasing, some sales tax is, is gathered from that. And of course, one penny of the sales tax goes to the MSBA directly, so that's off the top. And the rest, of course, goes to the general fund. So, that already supports, you know, everything we do in the state budget. I will say marijuana and gaming is very already divided up through the legislation, the, the enacting legislation for that. And so, you can go through the legislation and see exactly, so much percent is going here, so much percent is going there. And so, that's already spoken for, so to speak. I had tried and recommended that some of the marijuana revenues go into fund after-school programs, because we know, you know, one of the great ways of, of keeping kids engaged and not, and not engaged in, in unhealthy behavior is to have them in high-quality after-school programs. But in, even that is not an easy, we'd have to go back into the enabling legislation and change all of that, which was a heavily negotiated, like, piece of legislation already.
And I also want to put a thought in your mind, I didn't realize you were on the Health Committee. As you look at health reform, one of the things I'm finding with the work that I do is that when children are in schools and need mental health services, the children who can't get them are children with insurance. Because in the school-based health centers, you know, we can build Medicaid, but all the private insurers have different requirements that the schools just can't meet. So, to think about some way with, I don't know, if there's, I, I know at some point employers or, or insurance companies are paying taxes into a pool, is there a pool for public health funds for children's mental health that could go into the schools? That would be amazing.
Yes. Well, in, in fact, I'm glad you brought that up, because the Speaker, at the beginning of the session, announced that one of his focuses for this session is going to be pediatric, mental health, and behavioral health. And so, we will be working, and this has already been a discussion at the, in, you know, in my committee and at the state level, around how can we better address that? Because we know, you know, students are in school and with all of you and the teachers for way more than they are at home during the school year, right? And so, you're really the frontline. And it's really unfortunate, I think, in a lot of ways, that the schools have had to bear the burden of so many sort of social and healthcare supports for students. And, you know, of course, it didn't used to be that way, but the fact is that we have changing communities, changing demographics, and a changing society. And the fact is that you are there, and they are there, and it's a good opportunity to help students. And if they are supported physically, mentally, behaviorally, it makes, you know, they learn, they can learn, right? They learn better. So, yes, so thank you for bringing that up, and, yeah, absolutely.
I think we have time for one or two more. Yes.
So, Jen, I saw in the report that, that the formula, a, a recommended adjustment to the formula for out-of-district placements. What I realized is that we've, we've been working fairly hard to keep students in district and, and, for a couple of reasons. One is if there's programs that have enough momentum to keep the kids in, it's actually a cost-saver than sending them out of district. But it seems like the formula for the, the recommended formula only makes an adjustment to the, to the existing formula for supports for out-of-district, and I'm wondering if there's incentive for keeping students in district.
Yeah. So, actually, let me clarify. So, um, so what the formula does is it increases the assumptions around special education for students both in district that exist, you know, in district, and for students who are out of district up to the point where the circuit breaker kicks in. So, it actually does both. And so, once you get to the point where the circuit breaker kicks in, then the circuit breaker is the mechanism for accounting for that additional overage, I guess you could say. So, the, the change in the formula is actually for both. It's all, it's inclusive of all special education.
Can you, I, I thought I read contradictory things about that, that it was, that the circuit breaker was, it's now four times the state average.
It's 75% of the cost over four times the state average.
And is that going to be increased?
The four times part? No. The circuit breaker, i- it's a reimbursement. So, it's based on what is billed and what is reported by school districts. So, so it increases, decreases based on the spending, but the formula for that is not changing.
It will not change. Okay. Anyone else? Adam, did I see your hand up? Okay. I had a very quick question. Well, one I noted, I know, I noticed in, in, is it House Bill 1?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That there, there was supposed to be an expansion, they're considering an expansion of, of the foundation budget category to support a variety of counseling and behavioral health services. So, I was really very glad to see that. I don't know if you have any details about that. And then, the second thing I'll just say, and then, you know, that'll be it. When I saw the fif, the, the minimum, the minimum additional $50 per pupil, I was kind of taken aback because that, that's rather high. And I was wondering if when, if, as these bills make their way through the House and the Senate, is that like, it's going to be a deal breaker? Because it just seems awfully high.
Well, we've done it before. So, the legislature has, through the amendment process in the budget, have increased the per-pupil spending by a, a flat per-pupil increment before. And we've done anywhere between $20 and $50 per student in the past. So, that is, and we already are looking at the governor's budget, which includes a $20 per pupil increase in Chapter 70, and that would be true across the board. So, wouldn't, it would be true for Acton and Boxborough, just as it would be for Lawrence or Holyoke or Worcester. So, it's a mechanism to make sure everyone gets a boost. Otherwise, if you are just putting money into Chapter 70, it's going to be delivered through the formula, which means, you know, Acton, Boxborough, based on your ability to pay and your, you know, metrics, will end up getting less of that versus another school district that maybe has less of an ability to pay and requires more state spending in order to meet those foundation, the foundation budget. So, by doing a, a specific increase per student, we're making sure that every school district receives additional benefit. So, that would even mean school districts that are in their, hold harmless phase. So, if you're a district that is technically receiving more state aid than you're supposed to because of, you know, changing demographics or whatever it may be, you know, those communities, they're not docked Chapter 70, so money's not taken away, but you're, might be held harmless. So, you're held even for as many years as it takes to realign, right? Yes. So, um, yeah, and I've had other towns in my district have gone through this as well. And so, when you say, we're going to increase everybody by $20 or $50 per stu, per student, that means you're still, you're going to get an increase too. So, everyone gets a piece of that. Now, there's a counterargument that I will say, and I'm just going to put it out there, that, you know, why are we giving more money to school districts that don't need it when there are poorer districts that are, you know, have this achievement gap, pervasive achievement gap, who could use those dollars? And so, this is a constant give-and-take conversation in the legislature about what is fair, you know, what is, what is our role? You know, and it's a lot of philosophical discussions about what is the right thing to do. And so, but in the past, we've tried to make sure every district gets something from the state.
We appreciate what we get, for sure. Did you have a closing, like, very quick?
One more.
No. And you had sent me some questions, so I'm happy to answer those.
And I'm just kind of pulling all the cart. There, there's one, and I'm not a lawyer, but I do read the, you know, Chapter 70 and 71. And there's a phrase in there that I cringe whenever I read it, and that is, "subject to appropriation."
Yep. And that's on every single thing we spend in the legislature, in the budget.
Right. And I, I, I think I know why. But, but I, I find it hard to get excited about any recommendations that might come down the pike when that language continues to exist in the law.
Yeah. Well, and I'll tell you very bluntly why that is there, because if the bottom falls out of the economy and we have zero revenue coming in legally, these are laws. So, legally, we cannot appropriate money we absolutely do not have. And so, that's why in 2009, 2010, and even into 2011, you saw many line items not only zeroed out, but completely eliminated, because everything is subject to appropriation, because that's our job. As according to the Constitution, you know, I was, I told students in Harvard, I was at their civics be last week, two weeks ago, two weeks ago. And I said, well, if you want to know what I do, my job description is in the Constitution, because it absolutely is. And how we operate and how we, our role as legislature is clear. We are, we appropriate, but we don't cut the checks. We don't expend the money. That's the governor's job. And if we don't have revenue coming in to appropriate, we can't appropriate it. So, we can't pass a law saying we're absolutely going to spend, you know, $7 billion on this if there's not $7 billion to spend.
Thank you so much for sharing your time with us.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to continue with, where are we here? The School Improvement Plan. And I'm going to pass it over to Peter to introduce.
All right. Ms. Damian's coming up. I just want to introduce Damian Shagru. He's the principal of Conan Elementary School. He's going to present the school improvement update for 2018-19. So, Damian, it's all yours.
Great. Thank you. I'm pleased to be here to present the progress we've made on our school improvement goals for the 18-19 school year. As you'll see over the next 45 minutes, we've had, I mean, several minutes, we've had many people working very hard to make strong progress in these goals. And we're feeling pretty successful, but we know we have a lot more work to do. Our first goal this year focused on teaching and learning. And along with the district values of wellness, we focused on the teaching of mindfulness, resilience, and a growth mindset. Student stress is certainly a topic we've unfortunately become acutely aware of. We see it in all students, and as a group, we wanted to address it. To help us with this work, we used the book, "The Growth Mindset Coach: Teachers' Month-by-Month Handbook for Empowering Students to Achieve" by Annie Brock and Heather Hunley. Teachers read the book over the summer, and we used our building-based professional Learning Thursdays to meet together and discuss monthly themes and plan classroom activities. We had a team of teachers meet several times to help plan our Thursday work and set agendas for our meetings. I'd like to thank them all for their work. Anne Marie Pastor, our reading specialist, led the group with Chrissy Kelly from Grade 5, Carrie French, our music teacher, Kimberly Macy, a Grade 6 math teacher, Shannon Worcester, a special educator, and Meredith Tola Bromowitz, our speech and language pathologist. Shannon Worcester, a special educator, and Meredith Tola-Bromowitz, our speech and language pathologist. Their work and our Thursday meetings were structured in a similar way to what we did last year on Thursdays when we did our Super Readers Initiative. We found that the concepts in our mindset book and those Super Reader themes closely aligned, and we were able to incorporate ideas from both books together in our monthly themes. Skip the slides, sorry. Every month, teachers use literature and plan classroom activities to introduce and develop monthly mindset themes, and also strengthen last year's Super Reader themes. Here you can see how they are closely aligned. So every month, we had the themes, um, right now being March, we're looking at mistakes, our opportunities for learning, and that goes along with confidence. And we've had a few great kindergarten plays this month, all around confidence. We had one this morning for Mrs. Krumlich's class. It was very good. The monthly themes, especially in March, teach children that their hard work, not the final product is the key to success. Students need to know that failure is simply one part of the learning process, a very important part, and a time to learn, think, regroup, and try again. All too often, even at early ages, children are devastated that they have not achieved perfection on their first try at a task. This needs to change for their overall health, well-being, and engagement. Our monthly themes has helped us help children progress in this area. We're seeing more children in every grade level express the fact that they know they can improve, and fewer children upset about mistakes. Are we done? Not even close, but we are seeing positive changes. During our meetings on Thursday Building-Based Professional Days, teachers used a shared document to plan their work. The next two slides show examples from this planning document. First slide shows the plan for grade two in September around the concept of "everyone can learn." The materials they selected found that they also supported the Super Reader themes of curiosity and belonging, so they worked those in too. You can see the resources they used to plan along with activities to do during the month. So all second grades, they planned this together, and then they implemented these during the month. So students were encouraged to look at things they know and things they don't know with an understanding that you may not know something yet, but you will. Just like poor Gerald Giraffe when he realized he didn't know how to dance in, um, their book, Giraffes Can't Dance, that they used. But with his hard work, he learned, and he impressed all of his little jungle friends. Uh, the concept of "yet" is very powerful for students, and it's a very common theme in our work this year. Another good example is fifth grade January, um, where the theme was "feedback is a gift, accept it." Students are used to receiving feedback from teachers. However, teachers taught them how to accept feedback from their peers. When one entered the classroom in fifth grade during the writing time, they saw students working together, conferencing, peer editing, writing work, and using a feedback chart to help each other improve their writing. Students learned to use the feedback and improve, and did not see it as a criticism. In other words, they realized they worked hard, but they hadn't reached their potential yet, and with help from their friends, they were able to do that. A positive mind certainly needs a break now and then, and that was an important part of our work, to make sure students understood the importance of balance, working their minds and bodies, focusing on work and focusing on their feelings and surroundings as well. To do this, teachers continue to utilize short movement breaks throughout the day, which is something they started a couple of years ago. However, we have some great tools now. Some of the most popular activities were yoga breathing, along with actual yoga, Taboos, a type of interval training that can improve focus. And, um, we actually made videos for students to follow with our occupational therapist in our building, uh, which they love. They love to see her on the screen. Go Noodle, which is a great site with two-minute dance breaks, and sometimes just getting up and stretching and taking a walk. So if you tour Conan, you shouldn't be surprised if you pass a room where you see children having a two-minute dance party. Nothing more exciting than an eight-year-old mosh party, uh, mosh pit just before a math test. Really gets them going. Uh, we found that they love the fun, and they're able to maintain focus and a positive attitude much longer during class with these built-in transition breaks. We included a lot of messaging throughout the building to help support our ideas. And one of the most important pieces is that power of "yet," where, um, we had messaging and showed it around. So these are just a few slides of some of the things we did in the building, with bulletin boards, um, different pieces, the growth mindset. Bulletin board on the right is in a pod that includes second graders, third graders, and first graders. And each class took, um, control of that bulletin board this year to change it and show different growth mindset works they did. The little piece of Yeti wisdom down in the, in the middle are little signs that we hung all over the building about, um, be a Yeti, because you don't know it yet, you will someday, though. The power of "yet" became so popular that this year, when we added, we developed new online report cards, standard-based report cards. Uh, we added the term "not yet" to both academic and behavioral expectations. Bridget Sealy from EdTech really helped us a lot with developing these report cards and getting them online, so we'd like to thank her for that. Um, so you can see here for our academic report card descriptors, we're using "not wet" for, "not yet" for our Level One, which would be considered a, a level of a student who is struggling more than others. Our previous language stated that the student was at a Level One just beginning to develop grade-level standard. We felt that that placed the responsibility solely on the student, so we decided to change our ones to "not yet," needs more time and support to develop the standard and grade-level expectation. Shows that we're more collaborative, we're seeing that with harder work, we have faith that the child will succeed. Then our other category about social skills, work habits, and related arts, um, we use "not yet" when a child still needs considerable support in social acquisition, social skill acquisition, work habits, and related arts classes. And again, needing considerable support as opposed to not meeting a standard is much more collaborative and, and makes it more of a team approach. Our second goal, um, we worked with our PTO to, to try to build more engagement in our, um, school community. Here's a list of all of the PTO committees that needed chairpeople to step up this year and run them. And it was a struggle. All of these events are for building community and for fundraising, so it was important to get these committees rolling. So for several years, the PTO has been working on this, and we've usually had the same few people stepping up, taking control, and running all of the events, which is just not sustainable unless we wanna keep all of their children in sixth grade. Um, they, they do have the right to graduate out, though. So our PTO decided to work with our primary teachers to really focus on new parents and welcome them and encourage them to become more active parts of the PTO. We sent out a lot of emails, sent out a lot of messaging, and, um, again, you could see all, all the people that we wanted to work with. So the Conan PTO set up a beautiful website that they're, um, still working on and revamping, but they updated that regularly. Uh, they're, they utilize social media, mostly their Conan Facebook page, and we had numbers grow from fifty members to well over three hundred members this year. And we are happy to report that all committee chair positions are filled. We actually have someone who is interested in becoming our president, and he's trying to get a friend to be a vice president. And we really feel that with more parent involvement in our school, entire families will feel more a part of our learning community, and that will help build engagement. Um, and actually, hopefully bring in, um, we have such diversity in our school, more people of different cultures, to make sure that all of our events are more sensitive culturally and that we're able to meet the needs of all of our families. We did have a third goal, and I purposely didn't make a slide about that, because the goal was to support the district's work around challenge success. And we sent out the newsletters and sent out information from the district, but when we stopped to think about our work in the other goal areas, we really feel like we supported them through there, so I didn't wanna make another slide. Um, we're very happy about the work that we've done. We're really proud that our students are starting to understand the fact that hard work is the key to their success, not the quality of a final piece of work. Um, and that, as long as they're willing to try, we're willing to work with them and help them improve as students. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
First of all, I'll thank you for, for giving this presentation. Now, can we go back to the, um, your, um, called academic, um, report card? Yeah, so, um, so I, I'm just curious about, you know, uh, for the four, let's say the four is the, the best level, right?
Yeah.
So meets the standards and grade-level expectation. Uh, how we, how do we mirror this? I mean, how can we tell a student actually meets the standard and the grade-level expectation? Is it, is it kind of, do we have a standard across the board? Or just, you know, teacher by teacher?
Well, the, the teachers worked together to develop the standards based on their curriculum. And they, they took those, the common course standards and picked out the ones that they felt are, um, their power standards, the ones that are non-negotiable. So the way we looked at it is, at a four, a student is able to accomplish all work given on that standard without any teacher support. And then when a student's at a three, they're doing really well with it, but they still need, need to ask for some help here and there. So a four means they're able to tackle all of their, their work on a certain topic. So let's say it's, it's multiplying fractions, um, of certain sizes. They're able to really tackle a lot of different problems, get them correct. They fully understand the concept without the teacher having to come in and correct them.
Can I ask one more follow-up? Yeah. Okay, so, uh, when see the teacher help, take the teacher, take the help from the teacher, right? So it's kind of, it's in the classroom, or it's kind of, you know, uh, off, off time? Maybe offline? Say, "Hey, so, uh, I got homework, right? So, uh, I have some problems, so I need some help. So I contact the teacher or contact the assistant?"
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, is it that kind of help are you talking about? Or it's kind of, you know, in the classroom? So when the teacher, uh, is teaching something, so I, I don't, you know, I'm not quite, quite sure I understand that, so I can ask a question? It's, it's, it's another way to get help? So it's a kind of, you know, I, I want to make that clear.
It's when they get, it's when they get to the point of doing an assessment, when they feel like, it's, it would be similar to an old chapter test, but they're assessing in different ways now. And so while they're teaching the concept, um, of course, students, they're, they're, they want back and forth help. But when they feel like they've reached the end of that unit, or the end of that topic of study, and whatever assessment they're using, when students are able to complete it without teacher assistance, that would be a four. However, a lot of times, we're, we're looking at students meeting a standard, so the student does a pretty good job, but still goes back and works with the teacher to find out how to, how to fix errors, then that would be a three. But...
Michael, I'm gonna have to...
Oh, sorry.
Ask you to wrap it up. So, anyone else have a question? Eileen?
Actually, I don't have a question. Actually, I, I, I would like to thank you for giving us this really wonderful presentation. And there's two things really gave me the very, uh, I think it's a very impressive. Um, the first concept is you'll start to, we had some kind of, uh, I think Dom brought us that, I forgot, the mind, mind side?
Mind side?
You brought us that. And you get the, I mean, practicing to your school. And, um, I think that's way more important than, than anything else. And second is you mentioned failure. Because that's the really something the kids nowadays feel, "I can't have that, I can't face for that." And that is really, really very, very important concept. And the kids need to learn from the beginning. Everything they can be successful, they can be failed. But the very important thing they learn is they, they need to stand up and face for that failure and, um, you know, continue to do something and pass that. That's their lifetime concept. I like that so much. I never heard anything like that from other principals. And that's probably why you have very successful stuff and you're standing over there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, just quick, um, I, I very much appreciate, uh, what you're doing at Conan. I'm very excited for the kids that are going there. Um, I've talked often about engagement and not really had, uh, uh, a sense of the nuts and bolts of what engagement looks like, and, and this gives me a good, good sense...
Oh, great.
...of what it is that provides the engagement. And I, and I really think that, that the engagement is key to creating the, you know, the, the curiosity and the interest in that kind of stuff. So, so, um, kudos to, to Conan.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Um, I, I wanna echo what Paul just said, and I think if there's anything that we can do to support your engagement efforts, um, you know, please let us know.
Oh, great, thank you.
Because it's really important, and I know, you know, it's, it's a work in progress. So if we can support you in any way, please let us know.
I appreciate that, thank you. We're very excited that we've had a lot of parents of younger students, um, build their interests, so they'll be with us for a few years, and, yeah.
Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, with, with regards to the, um, growth mindset and mindfulness, um, I'm looking at your actual school improvement plan, so I could see the language of the indicators of success, most of which all have to do with professional learning, which is fine. I just wanted to know if you had given thought to what, um, the indicators of success with your students end up looking like? You know, there's a lot of goals in there about the teachers and...
Right.
...the work that they were doing, but I just, I imagine that this is probably gonna be a goal that continues. But have you thought about what those indicators of success look like?
Yeah, I have. Actually, I had a great conversation with Peter today when he was helping me process some of our ideas for, for moving forward. Um, and I think one, one of our next steps will be to start building, um, core values that make sense, that are easy for students to understand and easy for us to talk about, and, and really get the message out to all the students. And I'm, I'm thinking, um, you know, possibly surveying our older students about how they're feeling, um, about remembering how did, how did they used to feel when they failed compared to how are they feeling now? And, and trying to check in with students as we go along.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm just gonna end with the PTO stuff, because I, earlier in the year, I went to, um, the, it was a forum that the department was, um, hosting, um, trying to get feedback on a family, um, family engagement, because they're developing frameworks around that.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, that seems like a huge success, and that, you know, you should bottle that and, you know, sell it, because, no, because we need to know what works, and that seems to have worked. So, you know, kudos for that.
Thank you. And it's hard, because so many families, both parents work, and people are working hard, so for them to give up that kind of time, um, we know it's, it's a challenge for a lot of folks. So we're, we're really happy that, that we're able to get, get all these people on board. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a comment from the audience?
Mr. Shabul? Yes. John Peterson. Uh, the, the school committee has seen presentations from the elementary buil- building's school leadership, and each one has been different. And so I wanted to know how important to you it is that you and the staff and the Conan community can create a unique identity and do things in a way that you think will make your community successful as opposed to having a more homogeneous elementary system?
Um, you know, I, I think you can maintain your identity and still look at yourself as part of a district. We can look at different ways to assess our students, different programs. Um, if, if they all are research-based in our best practices, then we can utilize them in a way that is comfortable teaching for the teachers in each building and still keep your identity. You know, I think there are more similarities in the buildings now than differences. Teachers are all working towards the same endpoint. We're looking at the same standards. But everybody does have their own little flavor, and I think that is important. Um, but I think there's also a lot of room for the possibility of, of, you know, using our district buying power to look at programs that we might all be comfortable with at some point as, as programs develop and improve.
Okay, we'll move right into item eight on the agenda. This is a report from Dave on OPEB.
This is the moment you've all been waiting for?
Yeah, so while, while Beth is loading this up, public, public thank you to Damian. Um, it's one thing to follow a presentation about elementary education with OPEB, but it would be another thing to have followed up a presentation by some of your students here. So thank you for not bringing your students along. Okay, so with that, you have materials in your packets that were presented from the OPEB Trust Investment Advisor, from their annual report of fiscal year 18. This presentation is going to include material, some of that material that you already have. What's OPEB besides being a clunky acronym? An easy way to think, to grasp this is in terms of pensions. You get a pension, you vest a pension during your career. When you retire, you receive some benefits at that point. The difference is that a pension is income, and OPEB is the cost, typically the cost of health insurance. So you see, I'm not going to read the slides here, you can read along as I'm speaking. Both can have a big future liability that can be actuarially calculated in terms of what did employees earn today that will be paid in the future. So just like, just like the future pension liability that we're now funding, Acton-Boxborough contributes to Middlesex County Retirement, we can calculate the OPEB liability in the future and estimate the present value of that future liability for current, for current employees, and that's the OPEB liability. AB is among the leaders in Massachusetts as far as establishing an OPEB trust fund and significantly funding it. You can see on this slide how the OPEB trust fund at AB was established, who it's made up of, et cetera. There've been significant contributions to the OPEB trust fund prior to regionalization through the end of fiscal 2018, a grand total of over $3.5 million put in through district appropriations, and almost a half a million dollars more earned by the trust fund, so that at the end of the last fiscal year, June 2018, there were over $4 million in market value of the investments. And in this current year and in next year's budget, we continue with an appropriation of $900,000 per year. What the district has done is good, but there's still a long way to go toward funding the OPEB, fully funding the OPEB liability. As you can see, the total liability is there, and again, that is, in today's dollars, what employees have already earned, that they'll cash in, so to speak, in retirement in terms of health insurance costs paid for them. Retirees get 50% of their health insurance costs paid for. 8.4% sounds like a paltry number, but six years ago, that number was zero. And the fact is that $900,000 a year plus earnings is more than half of the addition to the liability every year. So the funded portion is going up. It's not going up at a very fast rate, and it'll take a long time before that liability is fully satisfied. So how will it get fully funded? I want to spend more time giving a bigger picture of OPEB at a future meeting. I don't want to bog down, especially with a lot to go, and it's already quarter past eight at this meeting, but I do want to say that there are options, and someday this liability will be fully funded. The district is appropriating $900,000 a year annually. The, as you see in the, in the material that I, that I gave you, it's earning over 5% per year. The interest plus the continued appropriations is going to eat down that liability. In the future, the appropriations to the trust might increase. The, both, so both of those things will further, will further reduce the long-term liability that OPEB represents. There could be additional sources of funding identified. And the big one, which is what I do want to get more into when there is more time, is that funding could be redirected, and in particular, the Middlesex County Retirement valuation now points to a 2035 full funding date. At that point, there will be a significant amount of money budgeted for, by the district that would go to county retirement, that would no longer need to be, to go to that purpose. If that money was redirected toward the OPEB liability, which I know a lot of districts are counting on, a lot of those districts' names begin with W, that is a way to significantly shorten the timeframe by which this liability is fully funded. Again, this is a little bit in the weeds, it's an actuarial number, it's nevertheless real. Cities, towns, districts used to pay for pensions on a pay-as-you-go basis, which meant the pensioners got their, got their money, and that's all that was in the budgets. It was, it was determined that if, if it wasn't, if that funding mechanism wasn't changed, districts and cities and towns would go bankrupt, paying the future costs of pensions. And the same thing is true with OPEB liability. Unless the, unless you adopt more of an accrual basis toward, toward actually funding that cost, the cost will get unwieldy in the future. And to the district's credit, it began that six years ago, and there's been some, albeit limited, success in what it's done. And so, I almost turned my mic off, that would... So for now, how else to end a session on OPEB, but with another clunky acronym? Are there any questions?
Not a question. I just happened to notice that in reading through the joint commission fund, foundation budget, you were among the participants in developing that, that report?
I was on the commission, yes.
I feel like we've got a ringer on the financial team.
Okay, thanks. I'm coming back up later, and you just stole part of my thunder, but that's okay. That's, no, that's all right.
I have a question as regarding that 900K contribution to the OPEB. So it's going to be every year going this, you know, for many years, or just, you know, this year, for example, next year, 900K, and then the year after, we're going to go probably a million, and then going up?
Thirty to forty years.
Because it's, yeah, that's a long time to go, so if every year, we could just go up, bump up, bump up?
I, I did say this at Budget Saturday in response to a question, but the, there's two pieces to OPEB. There's the liability side, where the actuaries come in and do their magic and figure out how much cost is going to be paid in the future, and then they, they bring that cost back using present value techniques, and so what is that value today? This is the asset piece that you've gotten. So that's the money that's, that's been, that's been on deposit, and Bartholomew, the investment advisors, are the ones who are entrusted with, with investing it and making a return. The other piece, the actuaries have done an analysis, and this is what I talk about, to have more time to get into these weeds. To continue at $900,000 a year is going to take almost to the end of this century to retire this liability. We've seen some other things, and the teaser is, well, what happens in 2035 if the pension frees up some money? That's when things come down significantly. It's one thing to even think that, that you're 80 years or so away from having the liability fully funded at $900,000 a year. That's better than forever, and I mean that somewhat tongue-in-cheek. But there's a strategy, there are strategies which bring that date back far earlier. Why, Dave? Why does it matter? Well, none of us is going to be around by the end of this current century, but it matters because if you can level off the expenditure for things like pensions and OPEBs, you can afford money for other things like educate, like Damian's school and educating students in the district.
But if, if the actuarial liability is 48 million, eventually that number stops going up. Much as I love our teachers, eventually, they're, the older people are going to pass away, new people are going to come in, it's not a constantly expanding pool. So at some point, it, it levels off, and we then threw our payment in and our, the money that it makes, and maybe extra payments, and we will, 80 years seems long to me, I thought it was 30 to 40 years.
What, I think what you're not factoring in is the cost of healthcare, because the cost of healthcare underlies health insurance premiums. So between the cost of healthcare, people living longer, people retiring sooner perhaps, things like that are what the actuaries get into, and those have upward pressure on what ultimately gets paid as a liability.
I'll just say, as a nation, we need to start making some decisions about healthcare and not have unlimited healthcare for absolutely everything.
The cost of healthcare is, underlies why this became such a huge issue, in my opinion.
Okay, look forward to getting into the weeds at some point. Anyone else? Okay, question from the audience.
The town of Acton and the school district have taken somewhat different approaches to the OPEB liability, with the town position being more aggressive in terms of funding the OPEB liability as compared to the district's position. Yet, in terms of the source of funds, we, they all come back to the taxpayer to fund these liabilities. Is it possible for us to persist with two different policies, one for the town and one for the district?
Is it possible? Sure, there are two differently, two different liabilities independently calculated. In my understanding, there's, there were two different cohorts of individuals, that one became the town of Acton's responsibility, and one being the Acton-Boxborough Regional District's responsibility.
I would just note that when we fully regionalized, both the Boxborough School District and the Acton Public School District had put significant funds into OPEB, and those went to the towns. They did not come into the district. The money that David showed pre-regionalization was money that had been in, put aside by the region for the seven to 12, grade seven to 12 region. And so that's one reason why the towns are a little bit ahead, so.
Okay, Green, live in Acton. I'm on the board of selectmen, I'm now representing the board of selectmen. But the other thing, the other part of that, though, is that the teachers that were all at APS at the time, or at Boxborough Public Schools at the time, stayed with the town's liabilities. Right, yes. And so those were the ones that we have funded. Part of what Acton has done as well is that any time we add a new position, we also have tied an OPEB factor to that position, so that when we're adding any staff, we are also accounting for the future liability, OPEB liability of that staff. And I think that's one of the major differences as well, because we're not then having that, you know, the issue of that growth. I mean, you mentioned earlier that there are, you know, teachers that will start retiring, retirees that will start passing away, but if you're not, you know, accounting for the additions that you're, that you're adding in, that's going to be a factor that will, you know, add into your increasing liability. So I think that is a difference in the town. I think it is important, just to clarify, that it wasn't money that, you know, that money was for the retirees that then stayed in, in the towns. Well, I-
Diane, if I could ask Katie, just a quick, Katie, just out of curiosity, how many employees does the town of Acton have?
Oh, God, I don't, that number off the top of my head. It's fewer, it's fewer than the district, certainly, yeah, right.
I was just wondering if you knew about-
Two, yeah, absolutely, yeah, thank you.
Marie, I should ask you.
We all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move right into item nine, a kindergarten registration update.
All right, so Marie is getting set up here. You know, we've been monitoring kindergarten enrollment since we began speaking with you in the fall about that and planning for next year. We had a wonderful session to orient parents, and we had our kindergarten tours go on. And as we've watched enrollment, we've been seeing some shifts that have taken place over the last few years in trends, in patterns, in terms of the enrollments parents are requesting. So we wanted to come back to you, give you an update, and share some of our current thinking around kindergarten with you for next year. So I'll let Marie take it away.
Thank you, Peter. Good evening, everybody. Always an interesting time with kindergarten enrollment. So we closed enrollment on March 1st, and we've sort of been working through the numbers and meeting with our principals and leaders ever since to try to come up with the best way to implement kindergarten for next year. So there are sort of two pieces of what I'll call big news. One is, we came in so far quite a bit under projection, which is the opposite of the last several years. Kindergarten, as you know, is the hardest to project, and we spent a lot of time with NESDEC this year, really looking at birth rates and housing sales and all kinds of things. And so far, we have 275 students who live in Acton and Boxborough, the projection being 342. Now, we do project 25 to 30 more students, so we'll probably end up somewhere slightly over 300, but the projection was 342, so that's quite a bit of a difference. About 20% under in, all in Acton, which is another sort of surprising statistic. So Boxborough was right on target. I put in the memo in the packet, the history over the last several years. You might remember, last year, Acton was over 27 students, and Boxborough was under 15 students. I don't know if the projection model sort of overcompensates, so we'll continue to work with NESDEC. The prior two years, we had 50 students more than projection. So, like I said, pretty volatile. The other piece of sort of big news was that the all-day K requests came in over 80%. So 81% of all students' families have requested all-day kindergarten. So, first of all, the lottery, we're going to hold the lottery over the next week. We've committed to families that they would be notified by the end of March as to placement. The school that will need a lottery is Blanchard. Blanchard continues to have lots of Acton families who would like to attend. And so the numbers here, 66 families of those 275 chose Blanchard as their first choice. 39 of them have hometown guarantee, they live in Boxborough. 11 of them are siblings of Acton students who are attending Blanchard now. So that gives us 50 families that have priority. At this point in time, we're making 52 seats available at Blanchard. And so that means 16 of the, I think it's 18 families selected Blanchard won't get Blanchard, so only two of those families will get Blanchard. And so they'll be placed in other schools. The first choices will fit into all the other schools, so a couple of them will be full or close to full after the first choices are placed, but we won't need a lottery in the other schools. So all-day kindergarten, of the 285 students, 229 requested all-day, only 56 requested half-day. This has grown over time, so it's 81%. Last year, it was 77%. The two years before that, it was 71%, and for several years before that, it was around two-thirds, 66%. Each school, once we distribute all the students, will only have between four and 10 students across the kindergarten in half-day. across the kindergarten in half-day. So after meeting a lot with the principals, we've decided to go ahead with hybrid kindergartens so that we can accommodate all of the all-day requests. And so what is a hybrid kindergarten? Sorry, I got ahead of myself here. I'll start with this. So what's a hybrid kindergarten? It's an all-day classroom where a few of the students are enrolled in half-day and they go home on the midday school bus. Half-day students, when you have a hybrid, when they're in a hybrid classroom, can move to all-day in the middle of the year if they want to, tuitions prorated based on the time of year. Blanchard had hybrid kindergartens for many years, lots of positive feedback. Some of the Acton schools piloted hybrids for a couple of years. 81% are requesting all-day. We believe we have to really look at a funding strategy to move to all-day kindergarten. So we're working on that and the budget subcommittee, we'll talk to them over the next several months with the idea that in the fall, we come to the school committee and talk about what will probably be a multi-year funding strategy to get us to all-day kindergarten. So if we make this move to hybrids that we're talking about, we're not really planning to go back to half-day kindergarten. This is a transition along the way. So that's the recommendation that we're making now. Blanchard has two all-day, has three classrooms. There are 18 students at Blanchard that want half-day. So our intent would be to have a full half-day at Blanchard. We have 18 students. Right now, we're putting 17 and 18 students in each kindergarten. So we're going to keep that as a half-day, but we need room for more half-day kids who may move into Boxborough and want half-day. So it's likely that one of the all-day classrooms at Blanchard will become a hybrid so that new half-day students come in. The other thing I wanted to point out is, I told you during budget season and in January that we would be studying kindergarten and we've begun that process. What we've learned is that our economically disadvantaged students are definitely overrepresented in half-day kindergarten. So, say that again, right? This year's half-day K, 25% of the kids are economically disadvantaged, they aren't free and reduced lunch. So we studied it a bit and we thought, we have to make sure people know scholarships are available. We reached out to folks again and again. That doesn't seem to be the problem. What we think the problem is, is that we fill all the all-days in March and there are wait lists in several schools. So any kids who move in between March and October have very, very low chance of getting all-day because they're full or they're mostly full. Our more economically disadvantaged students are more mobile, are more likely to move in over the summer, as well as our English learners. So one of many reasons we want to do this is we want to make sure there are seats in all-day classrooms available no matter when kids move to town. So that's our thinking. We've talked to, we've worked through this with principals, principals have talked to kindergarten teachers. We're still working through some of the logistics and we will continue to do that over time around curriculum and scheduling and, and all of that. So we plan to run the lottery and send something to parents over the next few days, but, go ahead.
So just one thing to consider because I think it's important is there is a cost implication to doing this. You know, based on the numbers, the, even though we're bringing a number of our half-day teachers up to full-time, the, there's additional revenue that's now coming in because all of those students who would have been denied full-day placements are going to be able to get them. So there's the revenue to offset a large portion of that. Right now, there is a revenue gap between what we anticipate for expenses and what we'll take in in revenue. We think it's probably around $100,000, I think we estimated initially. However, any children who come in between now and the start of the school year who want full-day K or who even start after the school year who want full-day K only add to the revenue stream but does not increase the expenses of the program, if that makes sense. So I, I think that's an important message. Another thing I want to, you know, share with you is, you know, we needed to make this decision based on really making sure that we take the best interests of our students in mind, but we also wanted to make sure that our teachers didn't feel left out of this. It was a quick process because we know it was a short turnaround between getting the kindergarten registration numbers in and having to make a decision about how to proceed. We did have all our principals speak with our kindergarten staff and actually all the elementary school staff as well prior to making this a public discussion, just to make sure people knew what our intent was and why we were making those decisions. It was also important to us to try and work with our half-day kindergarten teachers and from what we're hearing now, we believe that all of our half-day teachers are interested in actually moving into full-time positions. So that's good news. We had a couple backup plans. If they didn't want to move in, we still had some ideas about how we might be able to work with them to ease that transition because again, you know, and, and this was a theme, we have to take care of our teachers if they're going to take care of the kids. But ultimately, the reason was, this was the right decision for the students. We did not feel we wanted to turn that many students away from full-day kindergarten. And we had a couple of schools where there were only three students who wanted half-day K. That never would have been able to be a cohort or six students who wanted half-day K. We could never form a cohort of students out of that. So it also allowed families to stay with that first choice of a school and prioritize full-day K at the same time. So a couple of key points I just wanted to stress with you before we took some questions.
Hi, thanks for that. So I just want to be clear, you're, you're going to have a hybrid classroom at every single elementary school. At Blanchard, you're going to have a half-day classroom. Are, are there any other half-day classrooms at any other schools? And this is, this decision is one that now we are going to move forward. So at least, so we're not going back to any half-day K's at any of the elementary school.
So I, I think at this point, the enrollment trend over the last few years has been very clear. I think once we go down this path, you know, this is, we will probably, I, I can't say anything is written in stone that we would never change, but I think this is a real signal going forward that we've probably reached that tipping point where it's time to move our classrooms to full-day K. The idea behind a hybrid is it still provides an opportunity. It, I, we, it's not the ideal opportunity, I think, for some parents. They like that their whole, the child's whole class goes home at the same time, but that turns a lot of students away from the program. So this is really probably the next step in the direction of headed toward full-day universal K. I think it's going to be hard to come back from that, to be honest.
I'm fully in support of this. I just, I just wanted to be kind of clear. Are we, do we have funding? I, I understand what you're saying about the gap, the $100,000. As students move in, if we have students moving in that need scholarships and we don't see a significant, a significant number of families moving in that would pay the full tuition, are we covered? Can we still afford to do this?
So the all-day kindergarten revolving account fund balance is over $300,000. So yes. And to Peter's point about a hybrid, five half-day K students is about the break-even point of a hybrid kindergarten. So we're not really expecting to have many more than five in any of the classes. So the $100,000 was a very conservative estimate. I don't think it's going to be that high, but it could be up to that high. I don't know why the lights are all flashing.
Okay, so we're not always good at predicting how many kids are going to come and the, and the half-day classroom is, is full at Blanchard, that I understand. But what if everyone that moves into Blanchard wants full, moves into Boxborough and is guaranteed Blanchard, wants full day? Like, we have enough room in those full-day?
You know, we, we talked to Dana about this at Blanchard and he was very clear that he's keeping open the option that all of his classes may move to hybrid classes. Right now, based on the numbers, it makes sense to keep a half-day class there, but I think even with the shift of a few students coming in who want full-day K, it's important, what we don't want to do is turn only one town's children away from full-day K because there's some model that is rigid in place. So it, it really is, it makes sense now to keep the half-day K option open, but we are very close to moving that school as well to hybrid based on shifting enrollment.
And then my other question is, what, so those 19% of families that requested half-day, I'm guessing that a significant percentage, not a significant, but any percentage of them could have requested it because they know they can't afford it and, you know, I understand that there's scholarships available, but that gets touchy and dicey and all of that as well. So is there any effort to reach out to those families and make sure that they didn't ask for it just because they couldn't afford it?
Yes, and in fact, we already did that and that might be part of why it's 81% this year. But we sent an extra mailing talking about scholarships, talking about sliding scale. And the thing about this model is everybody who wants all-day can have all-day, everyone who wants half-day can have half-day, they can move if they want to move. The seats will be available. And we've put together a good survey for the kindergarten parents and right after the lottery, we're going to send it out to incoming K, current K, current first grade and some questions about cost are in there. So we'll see.
I just want to go back to that projection model. And this year, Acton is 22%, right? Incorrect, I mean, the projection. So, and you mentioned that last year, we also had some problems with that, the projection was, you know, the Boxborough, both Boxborough and Acton. So my question is that, you know, are we going to fix it? Because this is, you know, this is really, you know, this is my first question.
Marie, I can answer that because I, Lexington did a huge study on enrollment and they can fix it in every area except kindergarten. Like, you just can't, you can't, no one can get their arms around it in any town that I've heard of.
Well, nothing is, is not fixable. I don't, I don't believe that. I'm not believer of, you know, something is not fixed, cannot be fixed.
So can I just say, we don't do the projections ourselves?
Yeah, I do understand.
So it's a, it's a third party, they're demographers, they're looking at everything that's available to look at, the change in the economy, the change in housing sales are all a big part of it.
Are we paying that?
I'm sorry?
Aren't paying, aren't paying the consultant fee to them, to the third party?
Yes.
Then, then that doesn't sound right to me if, you know, this is continued going, we paid money and then we didn't get the results.
Sure. There's no other consultant that does this work. The, NESDEC is really the only consultant left in the New England that will do enrollment projections for districts. They're the same organization every district in the Commonwealth uses. The only other consulting firm that did this work and actually created the model that MSBA built all of their enrollment projections on were the Ashtons and they were Acton residents and they did our enrollment projections for years. They've since retired. And they were doing it for us for free, but that's no longer an option for us. So we're, it's really challenging. If anyone knows social engineers who can design us a good platform, we're certainly happy to change, but there's just no one in the industry right now.
I have one more question because I discussed, you know, I said I have two questions, so I just want to ask a second question.
Hold your question, I'm going to move to Mary and then we're, I'd like to draw this part to a close.
I just want to go back to the Blanchard, the one half-day class. I wonder if we should do a letter explaining that all other classrooms are going to be the hybrid model. I just, I think they need to know, they're not going to have a choice mid-year to, to go full-day. So I think they need to know, like, they're all in on their decision before the school year starts so that we can make the best decision. Yeah, so.
Okay, nice response to really what is an equity issue. Thank you, Marie. Okay, the big, huge item 10. Luckily, all, like, most of these were, were video links and I hope everyone got a chance to kind of prepare for this section. We're going to move on to item 10, which is on the Massachusetts Foundation School Budget. And we're, we're going to move, we're going to do this in parts. I've asked Ginny to give us kind of a, a quick legal history of, of the foundation budget and, and the review commission's recommendations. And then Peter and Dave are going to talk about its impact here in Acton. And then we're going to, you know, have a discussion and round, is the video, are we showing the video?
We're going to show a clip.
Okay, we'll show a video clip that, that was shown at the MASC conference in November called Tale of Two Sisters, which is the story of the impact of the foundation budget in Burlington and, is it Brockton?
Brockton.
Yep, and, which is just, just fascinating. I'm following that, very patient, Mike Balleski is waiting to speak to us and he will do so to round things up. So, let's start with Ginny.
Okay, thanks Diane. I'll, I'll be brief. So the Massachusetts Constitution, which predates the United States Constitution with one of the first ratified constitutions in the United States, has an education clause and the language of that clause imposes an enforceable duty on the magistrates and legislatures of the Commonwealth to provide an education in the public schools for the children there enrolled. And that's been interpreted by the courts to require, as early, the first education funding case was in 1819. And in that case, our, our SJC held that schools must be maintained for the benefit of the whole town. This was Commonwealth versus Dedham when education was completely locally funded. As it is the wise policy of the law to give all the inhabitants equal privileges for the education of their children in the public schools, nor is it in the power of the majority to deprive the minority of this privilege. So that's how far back equity, the idea of equity in education goes. It's, it's, it's 100 years old. So the, the first case at school, the more recent line of school funding decisions began with McDuffie versus Secretary of Department of Education and, and that was a case that was decided by our SJC in 1993. And in that case, the court declared that the Commonwealth actually had an obligation. It had always been financed by the, principally by cities and towns. And in that case, it recognized a much more expansive view of what the state owed to the children of the Commonwealth. And the Commonwealth, McDuffie found that the Commonwealth had delegated the responsibility to local communities and the system, and system of funding primary and secondary public education relied all but exclusively on local property taxes. And the court said that that was not okay. It stated that this amounted to an abdication of the Commonwealth's duty to educate. And the court then left the correction of this problem. As you can imagine, nine justices on the SJC are not especially suited to determining how to fund the public schools of the Commonwealth. So I think very wisely left the correction of the constitutional violation to the elected branches of government and left to the discretion of a single justice whether to retain jurisdiction of the case. And so, so that was in 1993. It turned out that the writing had been on the wall, the legislature was already on it, the Education Reform Act passed in 1993. And a whole new system, I won't belabor this, I think everybody knows of accountability, requiring teachers to become certified and take tests, the curriculum frameworks, all of that stuff came into being as part of the Education Reform Act. But, but, you know, differences and deficiencies still, of course, persisted. So the case that, that I worked on was brought in the early 2000s by property poor school districts saying that it's not enough, you haven't done enough and, and you're still, the state is still in violation of the Constitution. And so what the SJC, first we had a six-month trial and then the case, of course, went to the SJC. And in that decision, the Supreme Judicial Court stated that, given all of the efforts, legislation, new programming and funding, a huge, huge increase in funding, that the court couldn't conclude that the Commonwealth currently is not meeting its constitutional challenge to cherish the interests of the public schools. And that's the Hancock decision, which is 2004, 2005. But the court was very quick to point out that they were not suggesting that the goals of education reform that were adopted by the state since McDuffie had been fully achieved, and stated that they clearly haven't. And this is the chilling language in where we are now, you know, all these years after the Hancock decision. Nothing we say today will insulate the Commonwealth from a successful challenge under the education clause in different circumstances. The framers recognize that the content of the duty to educate will evolve together with our society, and that the Constitution's education clause must be interpreted in accordance with the demands of modern society, or will be in constant danger of becoming atrophied, and in fact, may even lose its meaning. So that means that the door was left wide open to, you know, come back, should the state's commitment fall off, drop off, or otherwise not keep up with the demands. And I think what the commission's report, 2015, and now it's 2019, said very clearly is that that has happened, in, you know, in those four areas, that state funding is simply not meeting the recognized need and cost of the school districts around the Commonwealth. And, you know, Jennifer was kind enough to come in here and tell us where the legislation is on that. We, our letter from Tammy Govea, which I'm sure is going to be online, you know, she takes a somewhat different position than Representative Benson on that. But as I think everybody knows, and we learned at the MASCE Conference, that there are school districts that are very much gearing up to bringing a new round of education, funding litigation against the state. And, you know, the commitment dropped off, I think, a little bit before the crisis of 2008, and that certainly didn't help anything. But, you know, the needs are great, and the times, the years are ticking by, and, you know, the kids who aren't getting what they need, you know, in some cases, well, those deficits will not be able to be made up. So, you know, that's the history of school financing litigation, and perhaps, you know, there's more coming our way soon.
I just have a request that we read Representative Govea's statement into the record.
So this came in very, very recently. I only saw this just shortly before the meeting. So this is nothing that has been, like, lying around in people's inboxes for more than even a couple of hours. You don't? Okay. Do you want to, do you have a copy of it?
I, I'm happy to read it, or if Ginny is happy to read it, either.
Okay.
Dear school committee members, I am writing to express my support for fully funding the Promise Act and the Cherish Act, supported by the Fund Our Future campaign. Both pieces of legislation are critical for the success of all residents and students in Acton and through our state, and I wholeheartedly support moving these bills through the legislature. Massachusetts has made a constitutional promise to provide high-quality equitable education to all our students. As I have traveled throughout the Commonwealth, meeting students, teachers, and education leaders, I am continuously struck by the time and energy residents in every city and town have dedicated to making this promise a reality. We have teachers working overtime and using their already limited salaries to buy school supplies. In support, oh, in virtually every community, there are scores of college and high school students volunteering to support their younger peers by serving as role models, tutors, and providing engaging after-school activities. Union leaders, school committee members, parents, and advocates are spending their already constrained free time researching, testifying at public hearings, and organizing their communities to push for a more equitable, engaging education system to fully prepare our children for living in a 21st century economy. Unfortunately, despite this incredible groundswell of goodwill and dedication, our state legislature has failed to uphold its responsibility to fulfill its promise of a quality education to all of our children. Despite clear needs in cities and towns in all parts of our state, from coastal communities to gateway cities, to the hill towns of Western Mass and the dunes of the Cape, we have let our children down by consistently failing to provide all schools the resources they need to educate and support our students, teachers, and communities. The 2015 Foundation Budget Review Commission found four key areas of deficiency in our state funding formula, underscoring the need for change in the calculations we have made for low-income students, English language learners, health care benefits, and special education needs. Some of my colleagues in the legislature have argued that addressing these four areas is implausible, that we can only support some, but not all, of our students. Others, such as the governor, have argued that funding changes must happen at a snail's pace and with additional mandates and punitive measures placed on schools. These perspectives reflect the worst type of political cynicism. We cannot fund only some of our students. We cannot be tricked into thinking that the success of students in Acton and Concord is separate, or any more or less important, of any less importance than the success of students in Lowell or Lawrence. All of our children matter. All of our children deserve the best opportunities to thrive and succeed. More than that, we've promised them that we'll provide them these resources. It's high time that we deliver on that promise. It's time we pass the Promise Act. As for revenue, the most common oppositional refrain you'll hear, the challenges we face as a state in raising revenue are not accidental, nor have they been unavoidable. We face these deficits because of intentional political and policy decisions. Decisions that have cut our flat income tax rate for even the highest income earners, decisions to allow and proliferate corporate tax loopholes that demonstrate little economic benefit for the average worker, decisions to ignore, neglect, or postpone opportunities to raise revenue from previously untapped sources. The solutions to our revenue woes should never be to leave children in the dust. But unfortunately, that is a solution that some of my colleagues are trying to delude parents and school leaders into believing. The Fund Our Future campaign recognizes that this perspective is inherently unjust and unsustainable. The Promise Act fully funds these areas of identified needs in our districts, in a timeframe that ensures our students are getting what they need as soon as possible. Recognizing that schools are already managing to meet various forms of oversight, including weeks of high-stakes testing every year, the Promise Act does not create additional unfunded mandates. The Cherish Act recognizes that supporting our youth and ensuring that Massachusetts is able to maintain its status as a thriving state with intelligent, skilled, creative residents means adequately funding our public colleges and universities. We cannot keep burdening our students with additional debt. In an economy where a college degree is required to maintain a middle-class lifestyle, it is unconscionable to saddle students with college debt and the practices of predatory lenders. It is essential that we invest in our institutions of higher education, so our youth are equipped with the critical thinking, professional, and subject-based knowledge and skills necessary for engaging in society and our economy as thoughtful, productive, and innovative members of the state. Our Constitution reminded us that government is instituted for the common good, for the protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness of the people, and not for the profit, honor, or private interests of any one man, family, or class of men. This idea, written in 1779, is a value that we should not and cannot abandon. Our declaration of ourselves as a Commonwealth and a citizenry that is committed to be in relationship with one another, and the people who recognize that our success and failures are wrapped up in one another, are foundational to what it means to be a Massachusetts resident. These values make us who we are, and make our residents proud to call this state home. I support local efforts urging the Education Committee of the Massachusetts Legislature to provide a favorable report to the Promise and Cherish Acts. I encourage the Acton-Boxborough School Committee to express its support for these pieces of legislation. Sincerely, Tammy L. Govea, State Representative, 14th Middlesex District.
Thank you, Ginny. At this point, are there any questions? This is a very vibrant and exciting time in, at all levels, as the Foundation Budget Commission's recommendations are implemented, and we have all these bills kind of floating around and making their way through the state legislature. So at this point, I'm just, are there any questions? Or, so I'm just going to move on to Peter and Dave's report.
So thank you, Diane. So the real show is the accountant. I know, Dave, it's just, it's too easy. But in all seriousness, you know, I think the concept of foundation budget is oftentimes, for most people, regardless of how long we've been in education, one of the more mystifying formulas to come up with. And I think, regardless of the fact that we're kind of on the precipice of a major statewide movement around the foundation budget, it, I think there's an opportunity, even just within our own group, to really use this opportunity to really deeply understand how the foundation budget's calculated, and understand the implications, not only statewide, but really for us in this community. It's such a critical piece of funding for our district, to be able to understand not only how is it calculated, but what are the pieces of the legislation that's pending that have the opportunity to benefit our community? I think is a really, the focus of what's of interest to me. When I think of the pending legislation, there's really two large pieces to consider. One is this notion statewide around equity. And what does it mean to provide each student across the state an equitable access to education? Because that is absolutely not having, not happening right now. And we'll, we'll show the video in a little bit, but it's really just a primer to bring home some of the examples of what it really means to be a student and a teacher in a district that either has the resources or does not have those resources. I don't know if everyone had an opportunity to view it, so we'll show it a little bit. So if anyone in the audience didn't get to see it, they can at least get the gist of it. But before we got to that, we thought it would be helpful if Dave could actually give a short overview of some of the resources that he shared. The two links, I hope, were helpful. I usually judge things that if I can understand it, it's probably a good resource. So I thought those two were really helpful to me in understanding just how the foundation budget is calculated, but then what are the gaps in the foundation budget? We are so fortunate here to have our finance director be someone who represented all school business administrators on the Foundation Budget Review Commission. There are not many districts, except one, in the Commonwealth who's in that position, and that's us. So we're fortunate, and so I wanted to turn it over to Dave and let him talk a little bit about how the foundation budget was calculated, what our numbers look like, and give some implications for AB.
So we'll go through the slides, three slides, that summarizes the material in the memo, and then I'll ask if you have any questions about the basics. Okay? So foundation, there are three pieces to getting to Chapter 78. The first piece is, what's the foundation budget? The foundation budget is a minimum funding target. You have to keep that in mind. It's called the minimum amount of funding required to provide an adequate education. I'm going to say minimum several times. In 2019, the district's foundation budget was $55,170,000. That's not, that was not our budget for this year. By a long stretch, that's because of a couple of things. One, the foundation budget doesn't include transportation or capital costs. And two, the foundation budget is the minimum. And so Acton-Boxborough spends well above the foundation budget minimum, because it has the means. Nevertheless, included in that foundation budget are the five categories that I've shown here. So AB gets resources provided to it by the district, as you'll see, this all leads into Chapter 78, for things like EL students, economically disadvantaged students, and in-district and out-of-district special ed students. They're all included in our foundation budget. The second piece is, what is the required local contribution? And it's a contribution to the minimum required to provide an adequate education. The first is, the state determines target contributions based on the relative property and income wealth of every city and town in Massachusetts. And then a required local contribution is determined as a percent of the foundation budget. It covers all districts in which students are enrolled. So for Acton purposes, it counts both the Acton Public, the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District and students who are sent to Minnetonka. Here are some stats that are applicable for 2020 target and actual contribution rates for Acton and Boxborough. And you can see, Boxborough, according to the formula, is at the maximum required contribution. Lastly, Chapter 78 is theoretically the difference between the foundation budget, the minimum that's required, and the contribution that's required of the district. And in doing so, it's meant to ensure that all districts can fund an adequate education for all of their students. However, because the legislature won't allow districts to get less aid than in the prior year, there are two additional concepts that need to be talked about. One is hold harmless, and the second is minimum aid. So as I've shown in this, in the numbers on this slide, for fiscal, for fiscal year 2020, AB's, am I missing something? For fiscal 2020, AB's foundation budget was $57,464,000. The local contribution that was required was $45,087,000. Chapter 70 funds the difference at $12.4 million. But in the prior fiscal year, the year we're currently in, AB's Chapter 78 is already over $15 million. That means that is the starting point, $15 million, and not what the formula otherwise would dictate. And on top of that, we are, at this point, being told we're going to receive $20 per student in minimum aid. So the governor's budget, as of this, as of this point, and it typically changes between now and June, is $15,131,000. So that's very quickly how you get, and I've seen presentations that have taken two hours to do that, A minus B equals C, to get to Chapter 70. So with that, you have the basics of the foundation budget, and I said I'd ask questions. And so are there any questions at this point about Chapter 7101? Yes?
The hold harmless amount, does that ever go down?
It does, it could, and I'll talk about that later.
I noticed that, and, not working, but yours, so lucky. So Acton will drop, for 20, Acton will drop to 77% from 81%, right? 81 something, but Boxborough will still stay. So what made that difference?
That is a really hard question to answer succinctly, because you have to look at the equalized valuation of both Acton and Boxborough. You have to look at how that compares relative to the other 349 cities and towns in Massachusetts. I did a little bit of number crunching, and both Acton and Boxborough's income and property wealth, from the last time they were measured, in conjunction with the previous year's foundation budget calculation, both went up significantly. So there's more property wealth, and that's assessed valuation, that's done every two years, and there was evaluation done between FY19 and FY20. The numbers went up significantly, and so the percentages go up accordingly. It's, you can't look at Acton and Boxborough in a vacuum, though. You have to look at the relative position compared to everybody else in the state, because at the end of the day, and I'll just try and say it this way, the foundation budget formula is intended to have the required local contribution, I talked about that. It's intended to have that come half from property wealth, half from income wealth, statewide. So this little corner of the state that includes Acton and Boxborough, if its income and/or property goes up or down faster or slower than, higher than the rate of the rest of the state, it's going to significantly change its target required contribution, its target. In reality, the actual contribution, just like the aid, can't go down from the prior year. The actual contribution starts with, what was the contribution last year? And then they add a growth factor, and that's typically what your current contribution is. There's theory, and there's practice, on the aid side and the local contribution side with this. And it's very easy to get sidetracked into trying to explain it. with this, and it's very easy to get sidetracked into trying to explain it, to, or splain it, in, in a way that, that makes it sound simple. And I'm not sure that I answered your question well.
Is, are you going to say it again?
So, so the target and, and so Boxborough was at 80, Boxborough was at the maximum. Acton is almost at the maximum, but its actual percentage is, is significantly less. But you throw that out, it doesn't, it doesn't impact our budget, because the budget is not done with an eye toward foundation budget and, and local contribution.
I do understand that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, move on. So I was also asked to talk about the Foundation Budget Review Commission. Some of this material has been discussed by Ginny and by Representative Benson, and by the, the letter that the other representative, whose name I don't want to butcher, said. And I thought it was tough following Damian's school presentation. That was, that was tremendously written. You can see the who and the when of the commission. As Paul said, I was one of the who. As for the what, there are five sections of recommendations. There's been four budget cycles passed since the report was, was issued, and the perception is that there have been minimal actions taken to address the recommendations. Note, the, the commission said often, when people came in and testified and talked about funding strategies, it wasn't the commission's charge to talk about how it would be funded. It was just the, is, in terms of how I presented it, it was the what, what is required to provide an education in the 21st century. The graduated tax ballot initiative needs to start over. It's not, the, the effort that, that started four years ago didn't succeed, but the effort needs to start over. That would have provided, and still someday could provide, a how. I consider there to be some recurring themes that the commission's report addresses. You can, you can read them while they're on the screen. Remember, as has been said, ed reform was implemented in fiscal 93. It was, the effort was begun in 1990. It's not surprising that a lot of things are outdated almost 30 years later. So there are five major sections of the report with recommendations. I'll quickly run through the sections, but you have the report, it's very readable. Section, recommendation number one is regarding health insurance. It's a budget buster. Costs rose much faster than general inflation from fiscal 93 to pick any benchmark at which, at which point people were saying, we need to reform the foundation budget. Health insurance had always been far and away in excess of what was in the foundation budget. The commission recommended raise the foundation budget. They came up with a, a means to tie it to the group insurance commission rates, and also come up with a separate inflation adjustment going forward for health insurance to try and not have this anomaly happen again. Recommendation number two was regarding special ed costs, another budget buster. Full disclosure, special ed costs are greatly helped by cert, by the circuit breaker program, circuit breaker program. The commission's recommendation, again, raise the foundation budget costs for special education, in district and out of district. The third recommendation basically summarizes the cost impact of recommendations one and two, but there's a sleeper section in recommendation three, and it references an addendum to the report. It's important because the commission did not have time during its limited duration to dig into the costs of special ed programs today. Remember, the ed reform, the foundation budget was developed in the early 1990s. And so reading from the commission's report in part C, the gap between the foundation budget in district special ed rate and actual district costs needs further attention by the legislature. And the report cited the gap at $700 million. That's the gap between foundation budget spending and the higher amount which is actually spent by districts on in, in district special education after implementation of the other FBRC recommendations. This is a huge thing that was left unaddressed by the, by the commission, except as it appears in section C to the report, and I'll, I'll speak another few words about that in a second. Recommendations four and five won't say afterthoughts, but the commission was supposed to end in July, and as a result of extending until October, these recommendations were added. Number four increases the cost for EL students in the foundation budget. Many behind the Promise Act, and it's, and now you've heard it being called, called that, want this, want more done to address this and more quickly. And the fifth recommendation was in relation to low-income students. The commission got a lot of feedback, including testimony from all six, from six geographic regions in the state. This section details some effective strategies, and I've, I've listed them as summarized in the report, but the commission did not cost them out. Again, the Promise Act would address putting additional funding into the foundation budget for low-income students. So you've heard the Promise Act, those are the bill numbers, Senate Bill 238, House Bill 856. First and foremost, it caught, it would codify into law recommendations by the Foundation Budget Review Commission, and also institute a process where implementation of the recommendations was reviewed annually. There is, there are several other sections of the bill, one of which reestablishes the commission. That was initially in the ed reform legislation, but it had not been maintained. I believe, as I said before, we left open a massive question regarding special ed costs, and also it would allow the ability to further tweak things that, that, that require adjustment and not have to wait another 20 to 30 years. Before, the last slide is implications for Acton-Boxborough, but before I go to that, I just want to illustrate with my hands, what's at stake here? We talk about equity gaps and funding levels and whatnot, and Acton-Boxborough spends well over the foundation budget. Many of the communities, and you can guess who they are, spend at foundation. One of my closest colleagues is the CFO of the Worcester Public Schools, and they spend to the dollar at foundation. Their budget, they, they're just like everybody else. Health insurance is a budget buster. They spend well over what's in the foundation budget. Special education, they spend well over what's in the foundation budget. The foundation budget is the minimum. And Worcester and other communities like them spend at the minimum in the aggregate, but they're spending lots more money on health insurance, lots more money on special education, not lots more money in total. Where does it come from? It comes from regular education largely. One of the things I, I will always remember, one of the items of testimony on the commission was representatives on the school committee from Southeastern Mass who said, "Our foundation budget for instructional services for teachers is $5,100 per student. We actually spend $3,400 per student." That means that every student in that district is being educated with only two-thirds of the funds that are supposed to be set aside in the foundation budget calculation for their education. That's what's at stake, big picture. There could be some, some benefits to Acton-Boxborough, and I believe there, there would be by education reform, but the bigger picture is, I think, as was, as was really eloquently outlined in the letter, it's, it's a statewide thing. We're, we're a Commonwealth, we're not 351 individual teams out to win. So my last slide talks about implications for Acton-Boxborough. The current hold harmless, so this was your question, Adam. If the foundation budget goes up, all other things being equal, we won't get any more Chapter 78 until hold harmless is gone. The, the math that I did before, until that number exceeds where we currently are, it'll just reduce the hold harmless, but otherwise won't result in any more money. Some proposals have called for $50 per people of minimum aid. In the short run, that would be good. That would be a benefit to the district, we'd get a little bit more money. In the, in the long run, in the long run, that would exacerbate the hold harmless gap, because we'd getting more, we'd be getting even more money than the formula says we're entitled to. So how would we get a sustainable increase in Chapter 70? It would be by getting the foundation budget up to a point beyond which we're held harmless, okay? Here are some possible changes. They are, they are talking about significant increases to health insurance and special education costs for every district, AB included. To the extent those eat up some or most of the hold harmless, we, we get close. They talk, they're talking about low income and EL cost increments. The, the slide I had, there's already a million and a half dollars allocated to Acton-Boxborough for low-income students. Our low-income population is increasing. They're talking about adding more of an increment for low-income students. That's another thing that's going to increase the foundation budget unilaterally for AB and address hold harmless. Further study of special ed costs, as I talked about, if they reconstitute the commission, that $700 million gap statewide, a chunk of that can be attributed and quantified relating to Acton-Boxborough. And lastly, increasing district enrollment. The, the foundation budget formula is based on per-student costs, and so to the extent our enrollment goes up, and hmm, what's on the horizon that might allow us to have more enrollment? A new school building. So things, things are poised to add to our foundation budget and potentially eliminate hold harmless, result in more Chapter 78 to Acton-Boxborough. The study that was done, and I wasn't, I'm not recalling whether it was by MASs or MASc, talks about over a million dollars of potential aid to Acton-Boxborough if all of the recommendations are implemented, and that's, that is a possibility. In addition, there's just a couple other things to touch on briefly. Expansion of reimbursable cost programs, I've mentioned them, we get transportation aid, circuit breaker, charter school tuition. All of those appear to be on the table as being increased from, let's just say, historical levels of the last few years. And then finally, lifting all boats, MA, I read MASs's proposal that calls for a shift in the cost share of the foundation budget between the state government and local governments. Right now, and I'll blow your mind even further, because in some respects it gets back to local contribution, in the foundation budget, it, it not only goes to, to try and set 50/50 contribution between property and income, but it sets the local contribution at 59% of foundation budget, not 60, 59%. MASs has said, that number's arbitrary, go to 58. If you go to 58% local, that means 42% state, and Chapter 70 would go up for everybody under that, under that scenario. So those are some of the things that are out there. I know there are going to be more presentations about this, and so I'll just ask again if there are any questions.
Dave, I just have to talk to one thing, kindergarten enrollment. Is there a difference in how district enrollment is calculated, based on whether students are enrolled at half or full day K?
Yet, yes, and also whether the, whether the full day piece is tuition-funded or not. So what's in the, what's in the foundation budget is intended to be the district's actual, the district's actual cost to provide those services. For AB, our foundation budget includes pre-K students at halftime rate and, and kindergarten students, excuse me, at halftime rate, because we tuition fund the other half. So when I said increase enrollment, one way to increase enrollment would be to provide full-day kindergarten universally, reduce, gradually reduce the tuition, and that would increase the foundation budget. Is that, is that the question?
No, I, yeah, I just wanted you to be able to talk to that, because it has some implications.
Oh, should I go back to like?
I'm going to make a really quick comment, and that is, I really appreciate the way that you come in and you explain things, and you're very clear, and you take some very dense material and you break it down into really easy pieces for us to understand, and I really appreciate your passion for the entire state of Massachusetts, so, and, and of course, your sense of humor, but I, you know, but I, I do, I appreciate, appreciate the way you come in and you really lay things out and explain them so that it's clear.
Thank you. I'll just say, there are 11 of you, so I appreciate that comment, but I know, I've been living with this stuff for so long that sometimes I gloss over something. I feel like, Michael, I didn't do his question justice. You can please come in and see me, and I'll walk you through it with, with pictures and numbers and, and I'll point to things, but I appreciate the comment.
So, basic question. So you mentioned about the increase of students, but right now we just heard that we have a decrease. So what's the impact on?
So should I, I should be clever and say, well, you heard my spiel, so what do you think? And make it a quiz, but if, if the, the foundation budget is based on per student, if the number of students goes down, the foundation budget goes down, but we're in hold harmless situation, so we're not going to get any less Chapter 70 than what we got the year before, plus whatever is, is adopted as the minimum. It will just make it harder to sometime in the future reap the benefit from ed, from foundation budget reform.
Okay, so Paul, I'm going to give the last question to you, and then we'll move on.
Can you go back to slide 13?
13?
Yeah. Oh, so, yes, you mentioned changes in low-income certification process. Am I right in remembering that that, there already have been some changes in the, in the low-income certification process a couple of years ago?
So I summarized the four sections of the Promise Act, and you'll see I put, kind of uncharacteristically, only put one line there. That's, that's a messy process, and the, I don't have a good answer about it. For, since, since the commission was in existence, DESC has been trying to come up with a way to, to aggressively ascertain that they've got correct numbers for low-income students. I don't think they're there yet.
I'd like to get the consensus of the committee at this point, if you want to see a Tale of Two Sisters. It's about a five-minute video. It's, it's pretty powerful, it is getting late.
It's very powerful.
Yes, should we go ahead with it?
I've, I've seen it.
I've seen it, but maybe for the audience, I don't know.
I've seen it.
Okay.
It's powerful.
You guys want to see it? It's, it's, it's five minutes, I mean, I, I would, I would be inclined to just go ahead and show it if it's five minutes, it's that powerful.
Welcome to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, where we pride ourselves on having one of the best public education systems in the country. This is a place where we hold a truth to be self-evident, that all children, regardless of ethnicity or religion, income or zip code, are endowed by this Commonwealth with a certain unalienable right to an equitable foundational education. But what if I told you this foundation of equity has become meaningless? What if I told you that while all communities here in the Commonwealth are held to the same high academic performance standards, not all communities are able to provide equal tools to achieve these goals? What if I told you there is a critical imbalance in our ability to provide teachers and students with the supports they need, and that this inequity is oftentimes based on zip code alone? What if I introduced you to two educators, two sisters, both teaching children in public schools, but in different zip codes? And because of these zip codes, work in vastly different realities. Let me tell you a tale of two sisters. Let me tell you a tale of two sisters. Laura Phillips is an art teacher at Marshall Simons Middle School in Burlington.
Right, so he's got to be around this, that sure. I've been super lucky. I have the ability to do whatever I want in my classes, and oftentimes, if I decide that I want to do a special project, you know, I reach out to either the principal or the superintendent, and for some way, we make it, and it gets funded. Everything I need is provided by my school system. The district basically provides everything, from pencils to notebooks to art materials. It affects my teaching because I'm not worried about the kids not having anything. I'm not worried about the kids that can't afford it, the kids that can afford it, you know, they might bring in extra things, but everyone is equal. This is a pretty well, well-equipped classroom, and I teach kids things that they would never learn in a middle school. Like, we run a photo club after school. It's free, and normally, we have about 24 kids. I mean, I have, you know, 35-millimeter cameras for middle school students. We use the computers. We, you know, we use acrylic paint, which, you know, I listen to other middle school teachers, and none of these supplies are even available to them.
Laura's boss is Dr. Eric Conti, Superintendent of the Burlington Public Schools. Burlington has a $60 million budget, 3,500 students, and spends $17,200 per year per student.
I think our teachers are, I'm an aspect of Burlington that I'm really proud of, and our building leaders, our principals. And having consistency in those positions allows for enhanced collaboration. And teaching's a very complex job, and I think you get better over time. There's a cost to turnover, and I've been happy that we've been able to maintain our staffing levels and keep people in the job, get them trained up, so we can provide the highest-performing professionals to work with our children across the community. Burlington was also, nine years ago, one of the first high schools to offer a one-to-one learning environment. That's where every child has a web-enabled device at our high school, and since that time, we've expanded from grades one through 12. So in Burlington, every student from grades one to 12 has a web-enabled device, and that allows us to access countless numbers of curricular opportunities and tools for kids to enhance their learning. We've added social workers. We've added school psychologists to each building. We've added guidance counselors. So we're really trying to make sure that those relationships that students have with adults, charismatic adults is what the research says, that there are opportunities for kids to form those relationships because that's when real learning takes place, and that's where that sustained learning can happen, you know, over time. We have a very active business community that's very supportive of the schools. Our Chamber of Commerce is, is, couldn't be more supportive. We have an education foundation that provides fundraisers every year, provides opportunity for innovation.
But this is a story of two teachers, not one. Remember, not all teachers are as fortunate as Laura. One such teacher is Laura's sister, Karen Cavanagh.
One of the mottos that we've had in Brockton the last couple of years is that we do more with less, and every year, we're asked to do more with less. For classroom supplies, every year, I buy my class all my own notebooks because I know some of my students can't afford them. So I purchase them with my own money. I purchase two-pocket portfolios. I buy pencils. I buy a pencil sharpener, and they're not reimbursed. Because of budget cuts, I've changed grades so many times. My kids are at a disadvantage because we don't have all those resources. They've cut all our extracurricular programs except for sports. So the kids don't have a science club, or a photography club, or homework help, or anything like that. We don't attract the best teachers because they know they may lose their job. We have cuts every year, so forming a collegial base in a strong cooperative learning environment, the person that you worked with last year might not be the person you'll work with next year. So from my standpoint as a teacher, I am not looking for more than what anybody else gets. I'm looking for the same. So if I'm held to the same standards, I should have the same materials, supplies, support.
Karen's boss is Dr. Kathleen Smith, Superintendent of the Brockton Public Schools. Brockton has a $260 million budget and nearly 18,000 students. Brockton spends just $14,000 per year per student.
The beginning of my school year was to really looking across the auditorium, and what we did was we put out 80 yellow ribbons in that auditorium. And that 80 yellow ribbon signified the 80 teachers that had been there the previous year that were no longer in the district. 80 teachers were laid off because of budget cuts. Little by little, we have watched a reduction in Chapter 70 funding throughout the state. Funding that was supposed to provide an adequate education for every child, no matter the zip code, has now been reduced when we're spending, and this is not just Brockton, additional funding for special education mandates, which our children need. Additional funding for health insurance that we have to provide to all our employees. Inflation rates that are out of control. You know, spending for professional development with the mandates that our teachers face, and making sure that we are leading the nation, we are number one, we provide a rigorous curriculum. All of that, while funds in Brockton over the past five years, we have been cutting, cutting, cutting. You look at some of your more affluent districts, they spend close to $300 per student, which is appropriate, and it is needed in this day and time. Last year, when we reduced 80 teachers, we spent $1.24 per student on a supply budget for materials, curriculum and supplies. Never mind talking about technology, that was reduced from $5 million down to $1 million. For some districts, they are able to go above and beyond once they meet foundation. If they want to bring one-to-one devices throughout the district, they're able to put an extra million, an extra $2 million, et cetera, into their budget to be able to support those initiatives with the new high-stakes testing coming in. When you're talking about your urban districts and your gateway cities, we do not have that opportunity. Our makeup now, 80% minority students in our district, a poverty rate that at one point was registering, 81% of our students were receiving free and reduced lunch. During that same time period, we have reduced our teaching staff by 200 teachers.
Just going to let that sink in for a second. I think this would be a wonderful time for you to step up, and yes, I'm going to ask Mike Baleskew, President of the Teachers Union, to take over it, and this is kind of the concluding crescendo of all that we've been talking about this evening, and I thank you for your patience in waiting so long to present.
Yeah, thank you for teeing everything up for me perfectly. I feel like I have the easiest job tonight, although I do have to confess, the setup aesthetically feels a bit like a Capitol Hill hearing, so I hope I'm not in for that kind of grilling. So good evening. I want to thank Ginny Kramer, Peter Light, Representative Jen Benson, and especially Dave Vertolino for speaking before me about the state of educational funding in Massachusetts. I'm here tonight on behalf of more than 400 educators in the Acton-Boxborough Education Association to ask for your support and your solidarity. A few of my colleagues are here in the audience tonight. They do have signs, although they might be asleep. It's been a long time. My Vice President Kristen Kill-Commons and I are used to the long languid pace of school committee meetings, but I doubt that many of my members are. Most of our members are not here tonight. They're at home grading and preparing for the school day tomorrow. Massachusetts Teachers Association, of which the ABEA is a part, is currently working on the Fund Our Future campaign to send a message to our legislature that we must approach 21st-century education with 21st-century funding. Fund Our Future is a grassroots effort to bring together educators, parents, students, activists, and elected leaders toward the common cause of fully funding education in Massachusetts. Tonight, I'm hopeful that you will pass a resolution, which you can find under 10.6 in tonight's packet. I also brought paper copies, in support of that effort. As you have heard this evening, the 2015 Foundation Budget Review Commission determined that our state's formula for educational funding, last updated in 1993, needs to be revised to reflect the real needs in front of us. Fully funding Massachusetts public education would result in more than $1 billion more invested in our public schools, and would signal to the rest of the country, and indeed to the rest of the world, that Massachusetts is serious about excellence in public education. According to the MTA's calculations, this funding could eventually mean up to $1.4 million more for the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District. And while we think about what could be accomplished here in our classrooms and schools with those additional funds, think about how that money could change lives all across the state in places like Worcester, and Springfield, and Fall River, and indeed, in Brockton, that could see literally tens of millions of dollars more in support. And that is why this campaign and passing a resolution tonight is not just about supporting students and teachers here in Acton, Boxborough. Your endorsement of Fund Our Future sends a message to students and teachers all across the state that you see them, you hear them, and you are willing to stand arm-in-arm with the ABEA and the MTA to fight for what we and they deserve. I am delighted that Fund Our Future has already been endorsed by our local representatives and state government. Senator Jamie Eldridge, Representative Jen Benson, and Representative Tammy Govea, who wrote that wonderful letter for this evening, have all voiced their support for Fund Our Future and have all co-sponsored legislation to implement the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. And in your packet tonight, you will see under number 10.5, the long list of school committees and municipal boards that have already endorsed Fund Our Future, including the school committees in Air Shirley, Lexington, Littleton, and Maynard. By passing a resolution tonight, you too can be part of this movement across the Commonwealth. As leaders in our school district, you have all been elected to do what you believe is best for students here in Acton and Boxborough. But as school committee members, you are also part of a network of elected leaders across the state who have been charged with the stewardship of public education in every community in our Commonwealth. I hope tonight, as those stewards, you will vote to stand with the ABEA and the MTA and pass a resolution in favor of Fund Our Future, which I would like to read now for all those in the audience and those watching on television who do not have tonight's school committee packet in front of them. And this is the resolution I offered for your support. Whereas, free public schools available to all students without exception are foundational to our democracy and are required by the state constitution, and whereas, all of our students, no matter where they live, deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child and provide them with a rich school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional needs. Whereas, the state's foundation budget formula, which determines state aid to each district, has been out of date for years, thereby underfunding our districts by more than $1 billion a year for essential educational services, and whereas, an updated foundational budget formula would bring the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District up to $1.4 million more in additional state aid each year, allowing this district to move closer to providing all students with the education to which they are entitled as residents of the Commonwealth, and whereas, the legislature failed to pass any foundation budget legislation in the last session, leaving districts, educators, and students without the funds necessary to support the schools our students deserve in every district in the state. Therefore, be it resolved that the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee urges the legislature to approve and fully fund a new foundation budget formula by May 1, 2019. I thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening, and I'm happy to remain and answer any questions you have.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Or did you second, did? Tess has seconded, okay. Any discussion, questions? Okay.
So this is, I'm still not clear about this. So this is a recommend for the state to get fully funded for our request. Okay. And this is putting our request to the state and to become a bill or let, or, okay.
Adam?
I'd like to make a quick comment. First of all, I'd like to express my thanks for everyone who came and presented and really provided the color commentary to the, the materials that we had in advance of the meeting. It was really helpful to sort of solidify the position. And, you know, my comment is wholeheartedly in support of this, especially when you look at our second value down in our own district, which is around equity. And a lot of the stories that I heard tonight were about the inequity in the, the funding formula and how so many of our neighboring districts aren't well-served by this foundation budget, that I think that this is a really important thing for us to represent one of our values statewide.
Thank you. Ginny?
Just quickly, I, I second what Adam just said, and I want to just channel Tammy Govea, who I met with on Monday morning, that the Foundation Review Commission was in 2015. The legislature, that was a recognition that we are underfunded, these kids. Those kids who started in kindergarten, they're in fifth grade, and they're still not gathering what they need. Some of those needs will never be remedied. So it's, it's a moral issue, as well as the way that I look at it and everything I've ever read, when we front-load and catch problems early and, and help kids in the early grades, it saves money. So it's also an issue of fiscal prudence. So I'm completely in support of this. I thank you for your efforts, and I think it's, it's time for the legislature to stop saying, "We can't, we can't, we can't." We have to.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks for all of your meetings.
We'll be first one with this now, right? They see.
I, I had thought of that, too.
Okay, noting the time, I'm going to suggest that we defer as many items as we can so that we can end this meeting at a reasonable time. Mary, I'm going to ask, as you did, you can do an abbreviated meeting and update, and then we will, we will move on to item 12, and then we can go from there. I may defer the rest.
Okay, so just a couple quick things. You got a, an email from Peter. The MSBA has moved us from a May review for our preferred schematic report to a July review. There were several reasons for this. Overall, they're particularly concerned about the twin-school aspect and that the layout be really well-articulated. But for us, we have strategized around this, and we were planning a special town meeting for mid-November. We're now thinking mid-December, by the 15th at the latest, probably a little earlier to get the vote in after that. So it's, it's not a two-month delay, but about a one-month delay. And the other point I want to make is, I will send you an email. I'm going to invite you all on April 10, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We are having Jason Tate, who's the Director of Communication and Public Education from the Office of Campaign and Political Finance. He's going to train us on Massachusetts campaign finance laws. The School Building Committee, but I would like as many of you to come as possible from the school committee. Campaigning around and educating around the school-building project, educating around it, is a key, a key responsibility of all of us, not just the building committee, but the entire school committee. But you absolutely need to understand the line between education and advocacy, and so please come to that meeting so you can learn about that. Thank you.
Can you just repeat the?
April 10, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. It'll be at the RJ Gray Library.
Thank you, Mary. We will do, we will move on to item 12. We will do, we will move on to item 12.
All right, so we're here to talk about the Office Support Association and AFSCME custodial maintenance contracts. And the negotiation subcommittee, Paul, Amy, and Tessa, met and went through this and made a recommendation to the full school committee, which is now coming to the public for ratification. So, as you know, the vast majority of our employees are teachers. We have 482 teachers. We have three collective bargaining groups, or unions. One is the Acton-Boxborough Education Association. And then, our custodians and maintenance are part of AFSCME, and there are 40 people in that unit. And Office Support, ABOSA, there are 40 people in that unit. The schedule of the contracts, a few years ago, got off-cycle. So OSA and AFSCME end this June 30, and the teachers end a year from June. We also have the categories of non-union employees totaling 1,000 listed on this chart. So this chart just gives you the cost of living increase by unit, along with the cost of other contractual obligations, like steps and supermax, and just the history from FY17 through to the end of the contracts, FY20 and FY21, and then what they total in FY20. So ABOSA and AFSCME were scheduled to expire this June, and the contractual cost of living for the last three years for those two contracts were 1.75%. What we want to do is ask the committee to consider extending the ABOSA and AFSCME contracts one year, so that they will expire at the same time as the teacher's contract, and the negotiation process that the committee will be fully engaged in can take place all over the next year in conjunction, one with the other. So that the advantages of doing this is, first of all, those two units that expired this year are very small units, 40 hourly employees each. And so, we're looking at the whole of the district, not just two small pieces. Negotiating all three contracts allows changes to be consistent across employee groups. That's one of our tenants in how we set benefits and working conditions for employees and work with employees to agree to those, is that we want to be consistent across employee groups. And again, it's better to know if the largest group of employees has any changes before closing out a negotiation with the two smaller groups. So the negotiating subcommittee is recommending to the full school committee that you consider a one-year extension to the office support and custodial and maintenance units. If you do that, the recommendation is to go ahead with a 1.75% cost-of-living salary increase for those 40 and 40 employees. And both employee groups have met, discussed it, and have agreed to this change. And this is the motion language.
So these are two separate motions. We would take the first one for ABOSA. Adam?
I'd like to make a motion to ratify a one-year collective bargaining agreement between the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee and the Acton-Boxborough Office Support Association, ABOSA. With no changes to the contractual language from the current collective bargaining agreement and a 1.75% salary increase, the new contract will begin on July 1, 2019, and expire on July 1, 2020.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Do I hear a motion for, motion to Adam?
I will not try and do it in one breath, but I would like to ratify a one-year collective bargaining agreement between the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSCME, AFL-CIO, State Council 93, Local 1703. With no changes to the contractual language from the current collective bargaining agreement and a 1.75% salary increase, the new contract will begin on July 1, 2019, and expire on July 1, 2020.
Any discussion, questions? Okay. All in, oh, I'm sorry. You're forgetting to look out there. John?
Do you want to move this microphone, or is that gonna be a problem?
You know what? I will be happy to move.
You don't want to be in the firing line?
Thank you. As you all know, because I have sent an email to the Shell talking about the nature of the process by which these contracts have come before you and have now been discussed in executive sessions, starting at 9:30 at night, and tonight at 10 o'clock in the evening. I have concerns about the level of effort that has gone into these agreements. To be clear, I have no concern about the actual proposed settlement. My concern is completely with respect to the process. Every negotiation that the school committee enters into is an opportunity to improve the equity in our district compensation. That is true when you look at the superintendent's contract. That is true when you look at these agreements. We had a long discussion earlier this evening on the subject of equity. It's really hard to be fair and make sure that you're fair to everyone, because it makes you need to understand, you know, everybody's, you know, internal equity perception, as well as the external equity perception. So the reason that I wanted to make this statement and to put a point on this is that I hope, as the school committee looks at the work before it next year, it fully recognizes the gravity of negotiating these three contracts, as well as the magnitude of its responsibility to make sure that each employee of the Acton-Boxborough School District is appropriately compensated.
I would just say that the equity here was so clear, that it was part of the reason why it was a fairly brief conversation. It takes five minutes to explain this. We had subsequent discussion and executive summary. And the equity here is having fair contracts between the different unions. And if we get out of sync, it's very, very difficult to do that. And frankly, the larger union has more power and typically has, you know, people don't understand that when you're negotiating a contract, it's more than just the salary. There's many other benefits and, you know, information or clarifications within the contract. And so, this, I think, provides the most equitable solution.
I'm going to suggest that we end here.
We don't need to.
Oh, we didn't vote yet?
No.
Oh, that was a discussion. It's getting late even for me. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Now, I'm going to suggest that we defer the rest of the agenda for this evening to our next meeting on the 11th, with the caveat that I'm going to acknowledge that the ABPTSO for a $400 grant for World Language Week at the high school. And I also want to just remind everyone that Monday, the 25th, we have our workshop at 7:00 p.m. on the superintendent's entry plan. It's in, no, Conference Room 13. And that Acton Town Meeting begins, Acton Town Meeting begins Monday, April 1, at 7:00. The warrant is published, it has been mailed, and babysitting is available. Do I hear any motion to adjourn?
Vote adjourned.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.